Regular meeting number forty-four will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Pastor Brooks, can we lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have my friend Pastor Victor Davis of Trinity Baptist pray with us. Pastor, welcome back to council.
Yes, sir. Shall we pray? Whatever we call you, God, Elohim, Jehovah, Jair, Elah, we pause before your greatness, your divine creation, your splendor and your wonder to say thank you. Thank you for this moment that we pause in the political scheme of our world, that just as you've called us to minister to the least of them, you've called us to serve all of them. In the Divine Rite, you said pray for those who have leadership over us. So we pray for peace, guidance, wisdom, patience and humbleness. We pray not only for our local government, for our government nationwide, for those who represent us in foreign lands protecting our democracy. We pray for those on the streets that may not have the shelter we have. And as we move forward tonight with decisions and administrative work that helps our community be a place where we can work, play and live, we ask for your peace to abide, your grace to overshadow us, your mercy to work with us and your justice to be tenored with prayer. Bless us now with our prayer. In he who lives forever, we say amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three seventeen point twelve. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three eleven point twenty-one.
Can I get a motion to suspend the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Here are none. The journal is approved. This week's communication received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be ran to the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dais to hear from council members, either resolutions or announcements, starting with Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, Council President. Just two announcements today. Again, happy Sickle Cell Awareness Month. Tonight, we will be lighting City Hall red in celebration of Sickle Cell Awareness Month. So please feel free to join us after council meeting on the Marconi side of City Hall as we light City Hall red. Secondly, want to again remind folks that next Monday, September twenty-fifth at five P M., my office will be holding a public hearing to consider proposed changes to Title thirty-nine of the city's code, more commonly referred to as the Diversity and Inclusion Code. The public hearing will be held here in council chambers and will give members of the public the opportunity to learn more about the proposed changes as well as provide comments, questions and recommendations once the presentation of the proposed changes is complete. Any resident that is seeking to submit written testimony should submit the document to my legislative aide JP Dorval at J B as in boy Dorval, D O R V A L, at columbus.gov by four P M. on the day of the hearing. Also, any resident that is wishing to speak at the hearing will also email JP Dorval in my office by four P M. that day. We do recognize that that is a Jewish holiday and we want to observe that. So all those that are not able to attend the formal public hearing on Monday, there is also an opportunity here at City Hall in Conference Room two-twenty-five on Thursday, September twenty-first from five to six P M. to also see the presentation and to provide your comments. Again, if you are interested in participating, please email my aide at J B Dorval at columbus.gov. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple announcements this evening. First of all, happy Latino Heritage Month. I want to thank everyone who came out to Latino Heritage Month Parade and Festival this past Saturday. We were not only able to double the amount of parade participants from twenty-two to forty-five, but we were also able to double those in attendance. We had nearly five hundred people who joined us here at City Hall throughout the morning on Saturday. Additionally, we were able to partner with the Guanajupe Center and Mercado Raíces, which is a program that this council supported, where we were able to provide opportunities for seven new Latino businesses to be present at the festival. I want to thank the Latino Heritage Month Committee for all of their work and I want to again acknowledge our padrinos for the parade, leaders and pillars in the Latino community, Henry Guzmán, Sandra López, Alma Diaz and Derek Amaya. And I'd like to extend an invitation for our next event, next Thursday, September twenty-eighth, for Latino Heritage Month Policy Day, exploring the journeys and challenges faced by the surging numbers of unaccompanied minors entering the U.S. through the acclaimed documentary Which Way Home, followed by an expert-led Q and A. This event provides a platform to understand and engage with this pressing issue. We'd like to thank the Columbus Museum of Art for sponsoring this important event. Invite everyone to follow us on social media at LatinoHeritageTBus or go to our website, latinoheritagetbus.org for more information on the events for Latino Heritage Month from now until October fifteenth. Secondly, on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, it's going to be a busy week next week, after our public hearing on Monday, my office will be hosting a public hearing at four-thirty here in council chambers to discuss the prohibition of the sale of new fur products in Columbus. As concerns about animal welfare, the ethics of fur, public health and environmental concerns over the production of fur products continues to grow, proposals to ban fur production are presently being considered across the globe. We'll be hearing from our partners at the Humane Society, the Columbus Fashion Council, about the harmful practices of fur production. The Columbus Fashion Council joins the likes of cities like London, Copenhagen and Helsinki in announcing a fur-free policy for its events, starting with Fashion Week Columbus next week. If you'd like to speak at this hearing, please reach out to my aide by three P M. on Tuesday. You can reach her at Jessica Caceres, J I Caceres, C A C E R E S, at columbus.gov. That's all for me, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I have one announcement tonight, or just to acknowledge, last Thursday, September twelfth-fourteenth at four P M. in chambers, Councilmember Remy and myself are at a joint hearing to hear a presentation from the Recreation and Parks Department on the proposed changes to our public tree code, which will apply to all trees on city property, of which there are a hundred and twenty thousand trees. I would like to remind everyone that the Recreation and Parks Department is receiving all public comments through this Friday, September twenty-second via their website, W W dot Columbus U F M P, urban forestry master plan dot org. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dorance.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Faber.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight I have a resolution, zero-one-seven-eight-X dash twenty-twenty-three, to recognize September twenty-twenty-three as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Columbus. I'd now like to invite Mary Taylor, founder of Friends of Faith Prudent Foundation, to the podium as I begin to read the resolution, as well as our newest little intern at the city of Columbus, Ms. Quinn up here. Childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, with one in two-hundred-and-eighty-five children living in the United States being diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. And there are approximately forty thousand children on active treatment at any given time. The average age of diagnosis is six years old compared to eighty-six years for adults with a cancer diagnosis, and about eighty percent of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late with a metastatic disease. The National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding, though it is noted that over the last twenty years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer. Hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the Friends of Faith Prudent Foundation, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional and financial support. Starting Monday, September twenty-fifth to Friday, September thirtieth, City Hall will be lit up gold to raise awareness for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. It's now my honor to turn the podium over.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Harden, council members and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Allison Stevens and this handsome fellow by my side is my husband, Brian. That little peanut you saw passing out ribbons is our little girl, Quinn, and she is a warrior. The three of us are humbled and grateful to have been asked to speak about our journey and our support for bringing awareness, understanding and quite frankly, a desperate need for research and funding for pediatric cancer. Cancer is a six-letter word that has impacted all of our loved ones. Everyone in this room all has known or has been impacted by someone who has had cancer. And children sadly are not exempt from this horrible disease. In two thousand nineteen, at the age of two and a half, our daughter Quinn was diagnosed with a Wilms tumor on her left kidney that was ten centimeters in size. Wilms is a renal cancer. Wilms nature has a tendency to metastasize into different areas of the body. For Quinn, her cancer spread from her kidneys to her lungs, and at the time of diagnosis, she was classified stage three in her kidney, stage four in her chest and lungs. After nine months of tedious and extensive treatment, which included a treatment change and a ratcheting of her chemo intake and an addition of radiation into her treatment plan, our little girl battled this disease again at the age of two and a half. About five percent of the pediatric cancer diagnosis are Wilms tumors in the kidney. It's taken decades of research to figure out this particular cancer and configure medicine and therapy that can combat it. So many beautiful children prior to Quinn sacrificed in order to get this exact calibration of medicine and radiation needed to kill off the tumors and the cancer cells in her body. Sadly, individual therapy for a child fighting cancer is not a one-size-fits-all kind of thing. Sometimes the cancers don't present or look the same way in each child and some do. Changes have to be made, data needs to be collected, trials have to be run, and every day, more and more cancers are being discovered and are often very rare in form and very aggressive. As more cancers are being discovered, there needs to be more research and funding on how to combat these diseases and give our children a fighting chance for survival. We thank God above first and foremost for gifting our daughter to us not once but twice, for strengthening her spirit and little body to be strong to withstand the intense chemo regimen and radiation therapy she received. She is His and we thank Him every day for what He's been doing in and through her. He has given us the opportunity to be here today to share our testimony and our story for what He has done through Quinn, which is beautiful, amazing and powerful. His cancer research warriors, doctors and nurses and many more are doing amazing work here on earth. And as we raise awareness, more funds can be raised to spur new and innovative approaches that don't annihilate the body and have the horrible post-treatment effects that will impact the child for years to come following that last dose of chemo. For example, long-term effects are reproductive health, spinal issues, oral health and potential for recurrence or secondary cancers are all some of the things that these children contend with. Right now, approximately four percent of government funding is allocated toward pediatric cancer research. The rest of it goes to adult-related cancers. Some of that research methods can cross over to fight childhood cancer, but not all of it can. Our sweet children deserve so much better than four percent. Our children deserve to make it to proms, to karate tournaments, soccer games, to singing lessons and church groups. Just within the last several weeks, I know and Mary can attest to three families whose child battled courageously with this disease and are now victorious, having earned their angel wings and are in the arms of Jesus. Their families are hurting and their families are stricken by grief but are marching forward in hope that we can, what can be learned from their child's specific diseases that could hopefully help another child like them in the future. The Lord uses all parts of this for something greater and more beautiful than we could ever imagine. No part of it is wasted. Their beautiful children are truly heroes. Many organizations are doing what they can to help raise support and bring awareness to pediatric cancer. Our friend Mary here with the Friends of Faith Prudent are one of the many beautiful souls God is using to care for each of our children that are fighting cancer and supporting their families like us. But more research is needed. The James Cancer Center, Say Jude, and so much more are working tirelessly for what can be done to combat cancer and find its source. But we need more help, more funding, more awareness. Children are getting diagnosed every day, over fifteen thousand a year in the United States alone. So we ask you, our friends, please wear these beautiful gold ribbons and think of these warriors who are fighting cancer at such young ages. They're battling in your neighborhoods, your schools, your churches and so on. Think of the beautiful warriors and the heroes that have gone ahead of them, who are no longer here but whose memory lives on and is spurring beautiful change in cancer research. Get behind these families, support them, pray over them, care for them and their children. Support organizations that are spurring research for cures and that need our help with funding. Support organizations that are supporting these families directly. Spread the awareness that childhood cancer is indeed a thing. It does exist and it is growing. The more awareness we have, the more we can do to unite and help to get a cure. I don't know about you, but I would love to live in a world where cancer is eradicated, where our loved ones and our children are seated at our tables, sharing smiles and so many memories to come. To God be the glory in all of this. Thank you again so much for your time and your patience today for hearing us out. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing. No, don't leave yet. 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 Thank you so much for sharing your story, Quinn's story, the journey. You know, one of the reasons why I love the opportunity for us to take a moment to present resolutions to amazing organizations and parents like you, because it does provide the opportunity for us to raise awareness for issues that do not get the kind of attention that they deserve. Fifteen thousand young folks every year being diagnosed with some form of cancer, alarm should be going off. And so I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for not allowing the pain that you all have experienced to cloud your ability to advocate for other young folks that might not have the opportunity, parents or even loved ones that have the ability to do exactly what you're doing here today. Do my colleagues have any comments, questions they'd like to raise at this time? I would though, if you all did not know, we have a little intern, as I'm calling her, little Ms. Quinn in the back here, that did don all of the desk on the dais with our yellow ribbons, as well as providing all of the directors with their ribbons today as well. And you can see that courage just coming off of her. One must have courage to battle exactly what you all have done over the last few years. And so I would love to just give Ms. Quinn a little round of applause if you all will help me with that. With that, I'd move for passage.
I think Councilmember Brown.
Oh, my apologies. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Councilmember Faber. I can only say to all of you as a cancer survivor, which I am, I'll be celebrating fifteen years next week. The courage that young lady has, you're going to be fine. You just got to hang in there and fight it, and I'm sure that's exactly what you're going to do. I am blessed and so is she. So thank you for coming down. Thank you.
I just want to say, she gets it from her mama. That was beautiful and I can think of, I mean, that was a mother's love. So thank you and thank you for sharing that with, sorry, thank you for sharing that with all of us. Quinn, you have a bright future ahead of you. Thank you for being here today and thank you for sharing your story as well and thank you for giving us all these amazing ribbons. And our hearts and our spirits are with you and you're going to be unstoppable. Good.
And we look forward to lighting City Hall gold in recognition of raising awareness for childhood cancer next week. So with that, I'd move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it. I think she's going to bring you the. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I'd like to invite up our partners from Drive Electric Columbus to the podium as I read Resolutions one-seven-four-X twenty-twenty-three to recognize and celebrate National Drive Electric Week twenty-twenty-three in Columbus, Ohio, as we celebrate the transition to hybrid and plug-in electric vehicles by drivers across the country. Fossil fuel vehicles are responsible for thirty percent of U.S. greenhouse gas emissions and are a contributing factor to air pollution and climate change, threatening the health of our citizens and the sustainability of the planet. The transportation sector needs support to move toward the adoption of clean energy technology, including plug-in electric vehicles that reduce our independence on foreign fuels and supports a healthy environment and economy. Columbus, Ohio, through the Columbus Climate Action Plan, is dedicated to being a leader in the use of clean energy, establishing policies and programs that conserve energy and promote sustainability. Be it resolved by this council, the city of Columbus, that this council does hereby acknowledge, recognize and celebrate Drive Electric Week from September twenty-second to October first, twenty-twenty-three, and encourages members of the community to attend the Drive Electric Columbus event on EV event on Saturday, September thirtieth. So thank you for both of you for being here this evening. Mariah, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy, for inviting us here this evening. We appreciate you and all of the council members for letting us have this time. My name is Mariah Williams and I am the Executive Director of Drive Electric Columbus. I am joined here today by two other members. Erin Caution is joining us virtually due to health concerns and then my husband, Todd Williams, is another board member and he is here as well. We are deeply honored to accept this resolution from the city of Columbus on behalf of our organization. We are thrilled to be recognized for our continued outreach in the community as we prepare for National Drive Electric Week. For those who aren't aware, National Drive Electric Week is about more than showcasing the latest in electric vehicle technology. It's about celebrating the collective commitment to a sustainable future and offering education to the community. This year, from September twenty-second until October first, Columbus will join hundreds of cities across the country as we come together to embrace plug-in hybrid and battery electric vehicles as key players in the transition toward a greener and cleaner future. Fossil fuel vehicles have long been a significant contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, air pollution and climate change. As we gather here today and again here in Columbus on September thirtieth for our National Drive Electric Week event, we know we are a growing part of the transition to cleaner transportation. Columbus has shown exceptional dedication to the cause of clean energy. Through initiatives like the Columbus Climate Action Plan, our city has been at the forefront of adopting sustainable practices and policies that not only conserve energy but also promote a more sustainable future. We lead the state of Ohio in electric vehicle adoption with more than four thousand EVs being added to the registrations here in Columbus alone already this year. As we watch Columbus City Services set a shining example to all of us with their growing fleet of light-duty electric vehicles, electric buses and an on-order electric refuse truck, we're glad to see that they're taking the steps too. On behalf of Drive Electric Columbus, I want to express our heartfelt gratitude to the city of Columbus's council for this recognition, and it is a testament to our collaborative spirit of the city, our dedication of our team and our partners, that we're able to work tirelessly to make these initiatives a reality. In closing, I want to extend to all of you, as well as the members of the community, to come out and join us on September thirtieth from twelve to four at Columbus's very own Dog Tap, the BrewDog Hotel over in Canal and Chester, where you'll have the opportunity to learn more and explore electric vehicles and join that resolution that is transforming our city and our whole world, one EV at a time. So thank you again for your support and recognition. Together, we're working for a cleaner, greener and sustainable future for everyone.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming down tonight. You have a Ford pickup, if I'm correct. Am I right? Yeah, that's right.
As well as a Mach-E. So we're all electric family.
And they ran the power when we did the solar co-op announcement, they ran the power for all of the sound system and everything else. So it works wonders. So appreciate it. Do any of my colleagues have anything they'd like to add this evening? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
As we navigate this new dais. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that the Walk event with Little Amal is happening this Friday, September twenty-second at Genoa Park. Festivities start at five P M. and Little Amal makes her journey across Broad Street Bridge at six. Please bring your families down to experience Little Amal, a twelve-foot puppet of a Syrian refugee child who has become a global symbol of human rights. She is journeying six thousand miles across the U.S. and is stopping right here in Columbus, Ohio, this Friday. Hope to see you there. That's all I have this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Thank you to the council members for bringing those resolutions. Want to recognize, I hear that we have some O S U students in the audience today as part of a public service and civic engagement exercise and just want to welcome them really to your house. This is, we call this City Hall the people's house and this chamber the people's living room. So you'll see today and hopefully that you'll come back, that this is where we come to have the most pressing conversations, some that are exciting and fun, some that are challenging. But this is where we come together as one community to discuss those things that make Columbus better. So welcome and welcome back. I hope to see you again. And also, just a reminder that we will not be meeting next week in observant of Yonkapur. So we wish everyone observing this meaningful day, a meaningful day of reflection and an easy fast. With that, are there any other comments by the elected officials? Seeing none, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance or resolution for the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive the reading of thirty-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the records the ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee Ordinance twenty-five-ninety-one dash twenty-twenty-three, Veterans Senior and Disability Affairs Committee Ordinance twenty-four-twenty-five dash twenty-twenty-three, Education Committee Ordinance twenty-four-ninety-two and twenty-four-ninety-eight dash twenty-twenty-three, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance fifteen-twenty-five twenty-four-oh-two twenty-four-fifteen twenty-four-eighty-two and twenty-four-ninety-seven dash twenty-twenty-three, Housing Committee Ordinance twenty-four-eighty and twenty-five-ninety dash twenty-twenty-three, Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance twenty-four-fifty dash twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the first reading portion of the agenda. We have a Mr. Hanif Muhammad, who's speaking on ordinance twenty-five-ninety in the Housing Committee. Mr. Muhammad, welcome to council.
Good evening, everybody. This is the second time I'm back down here. I actually wanted to speak, I have a list of things. I actually wanted to speak, I have a, a list of things that I was going through your agenda and I wanted to speak about, but I am aware that I'm only able to speak on, I believe, one issue. And if I had any other issue, I would have to bring that up later. And I believe 2590, 2023, um, there were five properties, I believe, that were up for grabs. And last week, we came in and we spoke about, um, different funding with AIDS. They were going, I believe, sending some money back for like AIDS or some, I think the faith mission, they didn't want to be reimbursed, so they wanted to send the money back. Um, I came back down here when I seen these properties to, um, maybe that, like, we could have used those properties and maybe used that funds or find somebody other than the faith mission in order to, to get that done. Man, it was another thing that I seen on there, I believe it's 2320, to where they were sending money to a Canadian company. We, they, them, or something like that. And I was just wondering if we could, I'm pretty sure there were a lot of companies inside Columbus and everything that, um, maybe we can do that. And, um, yeah, I apologize. I brought my son with me also, so, you know, I want to make sure I give him a shout out. And I wanted to ask city council, um, if they can possibly reach out to Touchstone to provide security, um, for some property. And I wanted to touch on, um, the, the high school, Merritt Franklin High School is, um, actually the, the tennis court is in shambles. There's a lot of different things going on at that high school. And there were, I got word that there was a George Gamble who was fired from South High School for CCS and OSHA rules violations. And then he was promoted to the A.D. of Merritt Franklin. And 11 teachers walked out under, um, the first-year Principal Fleming's. And it's, it's a whole bunch of, um, different things, um, as far as band directors and students and all kind of things. Um, I just, I didn't know how you guys work with the Board of Education, but when I got word of this and I heard that, you know, this was happening, I decided to come down here and, um, and do it. Hopefully, I'm talking a little bit better. I know I only got 56 seconds left. I'm watching the clock. I'm a little nervous. I didn't want to come down here, but I do believe that without me, um, voicing my opinions, a lot of these things won't happen. And, um, I got the sniffles because of the young lady back there. Her story was very touching. She had me back there crying, so I'm a little off, a little bit. But, um, yeah, basically, um, if we can, um, as a collective, hopefully, we can get together to, to empower the children to make a difference. We're not only make, um, more people aware of cancer, but make more people aware of AIDS, make more people aware of domestic violence, make the children aware of these things. That way, when they grow up, they can grow up in a different society that we seek. And I truly believe that without us focusing on the children, that that would be a problem. If we can focus on adult housing and different things like that, I believe that we can't focus on them children. And that's four, three, two, one. Thank you very much and, um, I appreciate your time. I gotta get him to take pictures for, for football, so I apologize if I run out.
Mr. Muhammad, I appreciate you. I would like to make sure that you get connected with Stanley, though. You gave us.
Oh, yeah. Big up Stanley, too, man. Big him up. Where you at? Where you at, Stan? Yeah, back there. Yeah, I talked to him. I talked to him this afternoon. I told him I was going to come back down here. So, I, I chat, I chat with him, man. And hopefully, man, um, I will be down here and you guys get to see my face a lot. I appreciate you guys for giving me the form. I love the marble floor. I just seen the ceiling today. I'm like, wow, I don't know what kind of ceiling that is, but this is pretty dope. I like what you guys are doing down here. I salute y'all for what y'all doing, the little programs that y'all got already out there for people. And I just continue, wish y'all, um, um, the, the greatest day and, you know. Yeah, thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Like I said before, it's yours. This is your, this is your living room, so welcome back.
Can I take a piece of that marble with me?
The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 170X, 172X, 177X, 175X-2023, Economic Development Committee Ordnances 2427, 2499-2023, Small and Minority Business Committee Ordinance 2519-2023, Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolutions 159X, 160X-2023, Ordnances 2388, 2394, 2384-2023, Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee Ordinance 2535-2023, Veterans Senior and Disability Affairs Ordnances 2392, 2423-2023, Public Utilities Committee Ordnances 1345, 2343, 2344, 2345, 2390, 2509-2023, Housing Committee Ordnances 2234, 2251, 2443, 2485, 2502-2023, Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee Ordnances 2296 and 2431-2023, Health and Human Services Committee Ordnances 1917, 2223, 2240, 2313, 2320, 2337, 2442, and 2452-2023, Public Safety Committee Ordnances 2377, 2393, 2525-2023, and 2531-2023, Finance Committee Resolution 163X-2023, Ordnances 2293, 2422, 2444, and 2490-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have at least one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. Mr. Nate Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
16, Toward Arlington Avenue, North London area, as a resident. I'm going to speak in, uh, favor of this CA 25, 2485, 2023, in the housing piece. I believe, to my knowledge here, uh, $155,133.68. I'll just want to give you my opinion on this, but if we are talking about, um, homeowner repairs. And again, there's multiple times we are leaving out the, um, visually impaired, the, uh, people that's serving in the Army, uh, Army War, those old-time people that serve our country. They're also need assistance. I'll just give you one prime story. Oh, I worked in the store and there's a lady had come to me. She lives in, um, South Linden. And, um, she's in a wheelchair and I assist her in the store all the time. And it, it seems like we need more money for those type of people. But I'm recommending, um, uh, $6.5 million and 89 cents for 24 years. That's slide number one. Slide number two, I'm estimating it of $7.9 million and 75 cents for 37 and a half years. The third is a big chunk of money of $34,745 for 39 years. Let me just break this down to you. There's multiple times we are leaving out the visually impaired, the multi-handicapped that's living in these homes. Some of these people that need homeowner assistance, uh, repairs, windows, doors, and other things like that. A lot of this money can be broken down in certain neighborhoods, crime things in certain areas, or either, um, for young people to stop the violence. And so, I do believe since the city of Columbus is really growing, we have to start thinking more outside the box here. If we are going to be talking about homeowner repairs and homeowner occupancy in some of these buildings and some of these vacant homes and vacant commercializing buildings. As I come down here on the bus line, I see the same buildings that's not being idolized, being torn up, being switched over to hand-to-hand time after time again. And so, we want to bring the opportunity back with some of these ideas. So, again, I'm questionable for that kind of money for the next several years. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for your, your advocacy and support for this ordinance. Are there any other, are there any questions for Mr. Wilkins? Hearing none. The, Mr. Muhammad, who just spoke, uh, on the first reading, was signed up to speak two other times, um, on consent, but I think we heard that he had to run out. So, are there any other questions or comments, uh, regarding the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa de Padilla. Mr. Brown. Mr. Dorance. Ms. Faber. Mr. Remy. President Harden.
Yes. Uh, ordinance is our pass. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden, tonight in the Economic Development Committee. For a second reading, we have Resolution 0173X-2023 to accept the recommendations of the 2023 Columbus Tax Incentive Review Council regarding the continuation, modification, or cancellation of all property tax incentives based on the evaluation of reporting year 2022 and to declare an emergency. Now, this resolution is a part of an annual process in which the Tax Incentive Review Council, um, more commonly known as the Turk, reviews all of the city's enterprise zone agreements post 1994, community reinvestment area agreements, and tax increment financing districts. Per Ohio Revised Code, the Turk makes recommendations on whether to sustain, revise, or cancel each agreement. The Turk must then submit these recommendations to the city council for a vote on whether to accept, reject, or modify these recommendations. This resolution, uh, would accept, uh, the recommendations from this year's Turk. Now, this is an important mechanism with the economic development process, um, by which, uh, because we are able to formally measure, uh, for accountability, the Turk meets to ensure that companies receiving city of Columbus incentives are meeting goals regarding job creation, job retention, payroll generation, and capital investment. Uh, we have Deputy Director Quentin Harris, who is here with us. Uh, Director, anything that you want to add to this or any findings that you and your team, uh, got from the Turk this year?
Thank you, Chair Bangston, Council President Harden, members of council. This year, we felt, um, that we had a, a really good Turk evaluation, um, with the members of the Tax Incentive Review Council, uh, out of 118 enterprise zones and CRA agreements. Uh, we had 11,962 retained jobs, which is 121% of goal, $2.66 billion in real property tax improvement, which is 101% of goal, 6,565 net new jobs, uh, created in 2022, which is 73% of goal, and 246 million in new job payroll, which is 133, 133% of goal. We're still coming out of the effects of the pandemic. Companies are, um, recalibrating, um, figuring out new methodologies like remote work and hybrid, um, work environments. And so, we've been working really hard with these companies, making sure that, uh, we're flexible and, and move with the speed and, and agility that the private sector do. And we think that, uh, the recommendations that the Tax Incentive Review Council have made, uh, is in line and we're very supportive of them.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? I just want to, uh, again, point out that, you know, this is the mechanism that we use. That is, you know, state mandated for us to hold, uh, companies accountable and to make sure that, uh, we are having things in place, uh, to ensure that what we, that those businesses say they're going to create a job and that they do it. Just to remind everyone, all of the work that we do in ED is all performance-based. Uh, and so, the way that we measure that is through this. The Turk is open to the public, so if folks are wanting to get that information, it is an open report. You can also show up to that meeting as well. So, I just want to thank, uh, you Deputy Director and the whole team there, because it's a lot of data, uh, that goes into it, a lot of contacting, uh, of these employers, uh, and a lot of reporting that goes on behind the scenes to ensure that we're meeting these goals. Uh, if there's no comments or questions from my colleagues, I move to adopt, uh, the resolution at this time.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it. Thank you. Uh, let me move to the Technology Committee, please.
Please.
Uh, tonight in Technology, we have ordinance 2403-2023 to authorize the Director of Department of Technology and the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a sole-source contract for annual software maintenance and support services for Hason, with Hason Banner LLC in accordance with the sole-source provisions of Columbus City Code and to authorize the expenditure of $459,136.66 from the Department of Technology Information Services, operating fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is a contract for public utilities to continue on their work, uh, for us as a city, ensuring that we are maintaining, uh, our software. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I first move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Amended.
And now I move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And that's all I have in my committees this evening, Mr. President.
Appreciate you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is, give me a second, Public Service?
Utilities.
Utilities Committee chaired by Councilmember Dorance. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, tonight in Public Utilities, we have ordinance 2145-2023 to authorize finance management director to associate all general budget reservations resulting to this ordinance to the appropriate current impending universal term contract purchase agreements to purchase some materials, supplies, and services for the Division of Sewers and Drainage Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plan to authorize expenditure of $1,230,000 from the Sewerage Operating Fund. Uh, the parts, materials, and services from these contracts are used to monitor, maintain, and repair equipment for various processes throughout the wastewater treatment plant as required by federal and state, uh, standards. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2190-2223 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract with Fields Excavating for the Atwood Terrace Area Waterline Improvements Project to authorize amendment to the 2023 capital improvement budget, to authorize appropriation transfer of funds within the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund to authorize appropriation of expenditure of an amount not to exceed $5,193,787.50 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan, uh, Account Fund for the contract to authorize transfer of cash and appropriations between projects, uh, within the Water Bond Fund to authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $2,000 from the Water Bond Fund to pay for construction administration and expansion expenses for the project. The goal of this project is to replace existing water lines that have a high break frequency in the North Linden Planning Area. Replacement of these water lines will improve water service, decrease burden on water maintenance operations, and reduce water loss. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2245-2023 to authorize city attorney to file complaints, uh, in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to time to complete the Barnett Road Stormwater System Improvements Project and to authorize an expenditure of $600 from the Storm Sewer Bond Fund. Uh, the Department of Public Utilities performing the Barnett Road Stormwater System Improvements Project must acquire certain fee simple title and lesser real estate located in the vicinity of Barnett Road from Fulton Street to Main Street. Uh, the city passed ordinance number 2432-2021 to authorize city attorney to acquire real estate. Furthermore, the city has adopted Resolution 0048X-2023 to establish city's intent to appropriate real estate, which will make, improve, and repair certain portions of the public sewer infrastructure in the vicinity of the Barnett Road from Fulton Sewer Street to Main Street. Uh, the city's attorneys pursuant to Columbus City Code, Section 909.03, served notice on all the owners of the real estate of the project's public purpose and necessity and adoption of Resolution 0048X-2023. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2329-2023 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a, uh, contract for professional construction management, uh, 2023 project with Hill International, Inc., to authorize amendment to the 2023 capital improvement budget, to authorize transfer of cash and appropriation with, between projects in the Water Bond Fund and to authorize an, uh, an expenditure of not to exceed $3,058,800 from the Water Bond Fund for the contract. Uh, this contract will support various projects in the Division of Water Capital Program that will maintain and upgrade drinking water supply and treatment facilities in order to continue to provide safe and reliable water supply to, uh, central Ohio. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance 2453-2023 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with Richard L. Conne Co. for the Black Lake Creek Sub. agreement with Richard L. Conne Co. for the Black Lake Creek sub，在subchunk sewer turning but, turning branch, a project to amend the twenty twenty-three capital improvement budget to authorize transfer of cash and appropriation with the sanitary bond fund to authorize an expenditure of up to three million four hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents from the sanitary bond fund, declare an emergency. This project will extend more than two thousand feet of sanitary access to approximately one hundred and seventy acres of undeveloped parcels near Shannon and Bryce Road. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. It's all of my committees at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Housing Committee chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember Flor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Housing, we have ordinance twenty-four-eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-three to amend the twenty twenty-three capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the taxable bond fund, to authorize the expenditure of one million dollars from the taxable bond fund, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into multiple grant agreements with recipients of the Department of Development, Division of Housing's Critical Home Repair Program, and to make payments directly to the contractor who performed the work, to modify grant agreements funded from this ordinance as necessary to complete the project and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Development to enter into grant agreements with the recipients of the Critical Home Repair Program and to make payments directly to the contractor who performed the work. The Critical Home Repair Program provides funds for eligible households up to eighty percent of the arion median income, that's around fifty-five thousand for one family home or seventy-nine thousand for a four-person home, that are in need of critical home repair. Critical home repair projects include things like roofs, windows, and doors, and mechanical repairs for emergency situations like clogged sewer mains. This is a longstanding program provided by the Division of Housing and falls squarely in line with our housing strategy around preserving affordable units in our community, as well as maintaining those critical home repairs as needed. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. May I move on to Criminal Justice and Judiciary? Tonight in Criminal Justice and Judiciary, we have ordinance twenty-six oh five dash twenty twenty-three to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit, captioned Scott Osborne versus the City of Columbus, United States District Court, case number two-twenty CV twelve-twenty-nine, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of two hundred thousand dollars and zero cents in a settlement of the lawsuit and to declare an emergency. On or about February thirteen, twenty nineteen, CPD officers Jesse Smith and Elijah Ladpo responded to the scene of a single car auto accident where the driver had collided with multiple unoccupied vehicles. Upon arrival, these officers quickly attempted to detain the driver in an effort to investigate the collision and because of his erratic behavior. The plaintiff resisted this detention and obstructed official business by putting his hands on the officers and by kicking them. Officers Lapito and Jesse Smith deployed use of force at a level zero verbal communication, level one takedown, and joint manipulation, and level four punches in order to successfully detain the plaintiff. Plaintiff was charged with resisting arrest and obstructing official business and was later convicted of the latter. Following his vehicle accident and interaction with CPD, plaintiff was transported to the emergency department and was found to have injuries to his face and eye, along with broken ribs. Mr. Osborne's lawsuit named Columbus Police Officers Elijah Lapito and Jesse Smith as defendants. Mr. Osborne alleges, among other things, that A, officers Lapito and Jesse Smith used excessive and unreasonable force when detaining him on February thirteen, twenty nineteen, in violation of his Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment rights. B, officers Lapito and Jesse Smith committed state law assault and battery and intentionally inflicted emotional distress upon the plaintiff when detaining him, and C, he suffered damages. After the evaluation of the incident, a settlement in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars was to be paid by the city was deemed to be acceptable. Tonight, we are joined by our Solicitor General, Conley Lees. Sir, do you have any additional remarks you'd make at this time?
President Harden, Councilmember Faber, thank you. The only thing that I would like to add is the rationale into settling this lawsuit came from a ruling that we obtained from Judge Sargis in a motion in liminy. The question that Judge Sargis ruled on was there was a presumptive positive for the plaintiff in this case for having various illegal drugs in his system. The judge decided to prohibit the jury from hearing that. With that said, we believe that the case becomes very difficult to defend because, looking at video, the officers had a belief that the driver was acting strangely. Turns out, for good reason, they had that belief, but we were not allowed, we were not going to be allowed to talk about that to the jury because the judge was focusing on what the officers actually knew at the time. So this case has been pending for three years. We've had a interlocutory appeal taken in that time. Plaintiff's attorney's fees, in this case, of two hundred thousand dollars. As council is well aware, any kind of a verdict in favor of the plaintiff, even if it's a dollar, entitles plaintiff's lawyers to fees. We, along with the Division, decided it best course at this point to reach a settlement.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Solicitor General this evening from my colleagues? A question either to our city attorney's office or perhaps the Public Safety Department. Were there any practices or procedures that were violated, and if so, how do we ensure that no officers in this, in the city, quite frankly, is no longer in this position in the future?
I can, I can answer that. So the use of force was found to be all within rule. So there were no violations committed by the officers. Use of force committee reviewed and determined that their conduct all the way through was appropriate and followed department policy.
Okay, thank you. Once again, any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President. I have three ordinances this evening in public safety. First is ordinance twenty-five thirty twenty twenty-three to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract with Grayshift LLC to renew digital software licenses to extract digital evidence from electronic devices, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to appropriate fifteen thousand three hundred and twelve dollars in the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund, to authorize the expenditure of eighty-five thousand three hundred and eleven and sixty-five cents from the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Division of Police Digital Forensic Unit needs to renew the Gray Key License and Artifact IQ Pro user licenses. The Public Safety Department requests to enter into contract with Grayshift LLC to renew these license, software licenses, which allow detectives to gather evidence by having the ability to unlock and decrypt electronic devices and extract evidence of salt, to solve crimes. There is also a need to appropriate fifteen thousand three hundred and twelve dollars in the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund to cover the entire cost of the licenses. Deputy Director Dan Jaren-Gundella, could you please talk to us a little bit about the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
President Harden, Safety Chair, Remy, this particular contract is one of the few softwares that enables us to access the Apple devices and is compatible with our existing software that our forensic units uses. Therefore, we request a bid waiver. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance twenty-six thirty-five twenty twenty-three to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer one hundred one thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars within the general fund to authorize the Fleet Management Division on behalf of the administrating and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to establish a purchase order for one vehicle from Reiger Properties, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of up to forty thousand from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. The Court's CERT unit was established as part of the Blueprint for Safety Initiative. In its inception, the Court collaborated with the Columbus Police Department and Franklin County Sheriff's Office to undertake field supervision and execute warrant checks. The primary mandate of the CERT unit is to oversee individuals considered to be high risk for domestic violence and violent offenses. This responsibility encompasses conducting field visits to residents, workplace, and other relevant locations of these offenders to ensure the safety of both victims and community. In close coordination with victim assistance, the CERT unit further extends its reach by conducting in-person field interactions with all associated victims, monthly or as circumstances dictate, thereby guaranteeing their well-being and compliance with the Court's directives. The CERT unit is staffed with a team comprised of one supervisor, one assistant supervisor, and five dedicated CERT probation officers, making for a total of seven officers serving within the unit. I do see that Judge Eileen Paley is here to say a couple of words about this. This is for the technology piece of it that will protect the CERT officers and the public. Judge Paley, the floor is yours.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, Councilmember Remy and Councilmember Faber, as our chair and the rest of council members. The Court is seeking approval of legislation that will appropriate funding for the purchase of a vehicle, vest, body cams, and additional equipment for the Special Emergency Response Team for the Municipal Court. The CERT unit consists of multiple probation officers, as well as the supervisor and an assistant supervisor, who conduct field visits. The unit's caseload consists of high-risk defendants convicted of multiple domestic violence and other violent offenses. The defendants have met the qualifications, screenings, and assessments required to qualify for probation department's highest level of supervision, which includes regular field visits to their residence and their place of home, their home. The defendants supervised by the CERT unit have the highest risk of reoffending and pose the highest risk to the community. In addition, this field unit performs monthly checks on the victims of each case to ensure their well-being. The CERT unit uses field visits to help remove barriers to supervision and assess the environmental surroundings where these defendants reside and where they work. The unit will also assist with city's safety initiative by helping to get guns and drugs away from violent offenders and out of the community. The equipment is essential to provide a safe working condition for these officers. The field work they perform, perform provides an important added level of supervision and protection to the community and the victims who have been impacted by their actions. The Court is an active participant in the city's commitment to improve safety in our community. We appreciate City Hall's recognition and their support of our efforts. Should you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Judge Paley. We appreciate it. I'd also like to thank the Department of Public Safety for negotiating the contract with Axon and making sure that we could utilize that contract to purchase the body worn cameras. If there are any questions or comments from my colleagues, seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance twenty-six fifty-six twenty twenty-three to authorize an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund, to authorize the city treasurer to enter into a contract for gift card banking services with the US Bank, to authorize the expenditure of up to two hundred thousand from the general fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to fifty thousand from the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund, and to declare an emergency. This funding is for this ordinance will come from the Department of Public Safety, Division of Police, and the Office of Violence Prevention for a community gun buyback event. The Office of Violence Prevention, in collaboration with the Department of Public Safety, plans to host a community gun buyback event on September thirtieth. I see Assistant, First Assistant Chief LaShana Potts here. Would you come forward and just provide some added context for what, what this gift card purchase is for?
Thank you, Council President Harden and Council Remy. On behalf of Chief Elaine Bryant, I'm a strong advocate for the approval of this requested funds for a gun buyback scheduled for September thirtieth. This is a crucial step in promoting community safety and reducing the prevalence of firearms in our community. Gun violence continues to pose a significant threat to public safety. This initiative provides a safe and responsible avenue for our residents to surrender firearms that they no longer want or need. By CPD taking ownership of those firearms, this ensures they do not fall into the wrong hands. Our goal by partnering with our community and the Office of Violence Prevention is to offer incentives for firearm relinquishment. We aim to prevent accidents, deter crimes, and ultimately enhance the overall well-being of our city's residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the event on September thirtieth. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have in public safety. With your permission, I'll move on to Environment.
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in Environment, I have ordinance twenty-four seventy-nine twenty twenty-three to authorize the Director of Finance and Management Department to establish a purchase order and enter into contract with Best Equipment Company for purchase of two diesel-powered Labry Mini-Max Peterbilt cab-over automated side-loading refuse truck for the Division of Refuse Collection to authorize a waiver of competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed six hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy cents from the refuse bond fund and to declare an emergency. The Division of Refuse Collection provides refuse disposal service to all Columbus residents. Some areas of the city require specific vehicles due to street and/or alley size that limit the size of the service vehicle. These Mini-Max trucks can operate in smaller service areas due to long lead times associated with the production and delivery of new vehicles and needed repairs and/or the replacement of current vehicles. This critical operation does not have enough functional vehicles to fulfill daily operations. Therefore, the purchase of the readily available vehicles appropriated for this type of operation is necessary to avoid the interruption of city services. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have in Environment. With your permission, I'll move on to Administration.
Please.
Lastly, with, let's see, the, let's see, I'm excited about these next three pieces. This is some pretty major changes to our paid family leave, and so excited to have the opportunity to expand and combine the six-week parental leave and four-week caregiver benefit, leave benefits into one policy called our paid family leave. The new paid family leave benefit is inclusive of all city, full-time city employees, providing for twelve weeks of leave at one hundred percent of the employee's salary versus the seventy percent provided in the previous leave benefits. This benefit includes leave related to the birth of a child, leave resulting from pregnancy-related complications, the placement of child for adoption or foster care, and to care for a family member with a serious health condition. The leave can be used in one block of time, in intervals, or intermittently as needed. The new paid family leave benefit is designed to recognize an employee's need to not only bond with their newborn or care for an ailing family member, but to balance the responsibilities of work and family without the burden of financial hardship. Director Brandon, could you share some more details about the lead-up to the policy and the coverage change, as well as the details around the three pieces of legislation in front of us tonight?
Sure. Thank you very much. Good evening, President Harden, Chair Remy, and members of council. We are very happy to introduce this paid family leave benefit, which will be available to all employees by the end of this year. This new paid leave confirms the mayor's commitment to equity by providing benefits to employees that promote a healthy work balance, work-life balance, and to ensure that the City of Columbus continues to be an employer of choice. To meet this challenge, it is imperative that we continue to review our benefits and offer programming that supports today's workforce. Providing paid family leave to City of Columbus employees is a huge step in the right direction. Paid family leave merges and enhances the city's current paid parental and caregiving leave offerings by covering a full-time employee's salary, as you mentioned, at one hundred percent for up to twelve weeks. This expands eligibility to newly hired employees, broadens coverage by modernizing the definition of family, eliminates the two-week unpaid waiting period, and offers intermittent usage to allow for flexibility when needed. Employees are eligible for the twelve weeks of paid family leave at one hundred percent of their salary for reasons that include the birth of a child, serious pregnancy-related health complications, placement of a child for adoption or foster care, and to care for placement of a child for adoption or foster care, and to care for a family member with a serious health condition. At its core, this benefit aims to ease the burden of balancing work and family responsibilities in a thoughtful yet responsible way. Paid family leave is designed to be a generous benefit so that over the course of a city employee's career, they can grow their family and be there for them in times of need without having the added stress of losing their city job. I'd like to thank our partners in the mayor's office who worked with us in creating this, and just remind everyone that the city's commitment to an exceptional employee experience is why this benefit is the right thing to do. So, right now, your favorable consideration is appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Director Brandon, and thank you to your team for all the work that's put into this to bring this new policy forward and set the future up for our city employees. It's much appreciated. Our first ordinance this evening is ordinance 2472-2023 to amend the Management Compensation Plan Ordinance Number 2713-2013 as amended by amending Sections 3, 8B, 9B, 10J, 10K, 11C, 14B, and 15A, and by enacting Section 10M, and to declare an emergency. Do any colleagues have any questions about the As, Bs, and Cs? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla Brown, Doran's Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance 2473-2023 to amend the Fire Management Compensation Plan Ordinance Number 2714-2013 as amended by amending Sections 3, 12B, 13E, 13F, and 18, and by enacting Section 13M, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla Brown, Doran's Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
And finally, I have ordinance 2541-2023 to accept the memorandum of understanding 2023-01 executed between representatives of the city of Columbus within the Columbus Firefighters Union, Local 67, International Association of Firefighters, that grants full-time employees paid family leave for up, for an up-to-12-week fully compensated benefit for the birth of a child, placement of a child, for adoption or foster care, and to care for a covered family member with a serious health condition, and declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Burrosa de Padilla.
Councilmember Remy said this at the top, but I just want to commend you, and I want to commend Director Brandon. This is big, and we can't say this enough. I think, first of all, for acknowledging all forms of family and those critical few weeks when you are forming as a family and being able to care for yourself, care for your family, care for the ever-changing dynamics of what it means to become parents, whether you're new parents, or, you know, whatever child this may be in your line, or if you're caring for someone. It's just a big move for the city of Columbus and another way that we are leading and being an example for the rest of the community in Columbus of how we think about families and center ourselves on families and giving them the time that they really need, both parents and children. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that because we could fly through this agenda, but 12 weeks paid leave is huge for folks who work in the city of Columbus, and I just wanted to, on behalf of the Women's Caucus, just acknowledge that because as we talk about pouring into, into our families, this is key, and I hope that many of our folks, especially in our business community, take note of this and what this means because this really is a strategy for attracting and retaining talent and ensuring that we're taking care of our people. So, thank you both.
Thank you, Councilmember Burrosa de Padilla. This is also just a few, a couple of different memorandums of understanding we'll do this with all our bargaining units as we move forward with our collective bargaining and get those memos assigned. But again, you know, it's been this committee's, you know, initiative and mission, along with the administration, to make sure that we are an employer of choice. And so, doing things like this and addressing some of the things that will make it more family-friendly to work for this government and this municipality has been a top, top priority. And so, I want to again thank the director, the administration, and everyone for their help with this. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla Brown, Doran's Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you so much. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Final committee to come before council is the Finance Committee, which I chair. We have two ordinance in this committee this evening. First is ordinance 2382-2023 is to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to establish various purchase orders for fuel and fueling services on behalf of the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of various previously established universal term contracts, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,100,000 from the Fleet Management Operation Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes additional funding to provide fuel and fueling services to city-owned vehicles. The current budgeted funds are expected to run out by the end of the month, so this expenditure will ensure there are no gaps in operations. Do any of my colleagues have any question or comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla Brown, Doran's Favor, Remy President Harden.
And finally, we have ordinance 2404-2023 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to reimburse the U.S. Department of Treasury for unspent emergency rental assistance, one program allocation dollars, to authorize the expenditure of $1,101,894.69 from the Emergency Rental Fund 2208, and to declare an emergency. For anyone who has been following, the city has received two allocations of federal funding to provide rental assistance to eligible households affected by the pandemic. With that funding, we have helped stabilize over 10,000 households. In fact, we have been so successful at distributing the second allocation that the city of Columbus was awarded another $68 million extra from the state of Ohio and the U.S. Treasury to distribute earlier this year. But this ordinance is about that first allocation from 2021. After processing all those funds, city and its partners did have a little over $1 million left after processing applications, and now we need to return that to the treasury in accordance with federal regulations at the end of this first round. Do any of my colleagues have any question or comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla Brown, Doran's Favor, Remy President Harden.
Ordinance is passed. Seeing no further business to come before council, I move to adjourn. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla Brown, Doran's Favor, Remy President Harden.
Council is adjourned. We will reconvene in, yeah, in 10 minutes for non-agenda speakers.
Regular meeting number 45 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dismiss with the reading of the Journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Here are none. The Journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember, President Pro Tim Dorance chairs that committee. All members serve on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking for council. I'm Reeme Zonin's Variances. We only hear a staff presentation for ordinances that have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if you have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. Here at night, we have received four public speaker slips, and I believe we have a number of area commissioners with us as well. All speakers on the council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of the area commission and applicants are always able to speak in an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. On the advice of the city attorney's office, I will now swear it in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer the penalty of perjury? If so, please say "I do." Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich and Tony Salabrese from the Department of Billion Zoning Services, Dan Blechman from the Department of Public Service, and Quentin Harris from Development have all been sworn in. Before we begin tonight's zoning business, I want to mention that last week we started reporting on the number of potential housing units that could be approved based upon our agenda. I'm going to continue to do so each week moving forward, as reminded, this council is working to address the housing shortage in our city and our region. On our agenda tonight, we'll be considering six total ordinances that could pave the way for building 79 new housing units. Almost all of them have affordability attached to them. Columbus City Council wants to make clear affordable housing is for everyone and everywhere in the city. As we know, our region is experiencing a housing crisis as economic growth continues, and at the current rate of growth, there's simply not enough housing being constructed in our city. To keep pace with demand, our region needs to double home construction over the next decade to see 14,000 to 19,000 housing units each year, but oftentimes, we're only seeing half of that on an annual basis. With that in mind, let's move to the legislation before us tonight. First, we have ordinance 2513-2023 to rezone 919 Low Street, being .22-plus acres located on the west side of Low Street, 165-plus feet north of Gibbard Street. And at the southeast corner of Low Street and Gibbard Avenue, from R4 Residential District to M Manufacturing District, the applicant is Robin Adams, proposes use of a vehicle storage. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. The Development Commission's recommendation is approval. Milo Grogram and Area Commission's recommendation is also approval. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2516-2023 to rezone 601 Freiburg Avenue, being .28-plus acres located on the southwest corner of Freiburg Avenue, and south, 17th Street, from C4 Commercial District to P1 Private Parking District to R4 Residential District. The applicant is CV Real Properties LLC, care of John Stevenson, proposes use of a single-unit residential development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Development Commission's recommendation is also approval. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Accept it.
And next, move to adopt the findings of staff, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2517-2023 to granted variance and provisions of Section 3332.03, R3 Residential District, and 3332.26, minimum side yard permitted by the Columbus City Code for property located at 299 Wahala Road, to allow a private garage as a principal use for the reduced side yard in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Stephen Bullinger, care of Dave Perry Agent, proposes use of a private garage. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Clintonville Area Commission recommendation is approval. We do have two public speakers signed up to speak against this ordinance, so before we hear from them, we'll have a staff report followed by the applicant. Mr. Dietrich, floor is yours.
President Harden, Chair, Dorance, members of council. The site consists of one undeveloped parcel in the R3 Residential District. The requested council variance will allow a private garage as a principal use, which will serve a single-unit dwelling addressed at 299 Wahala Road to the west across Goodrun Road. A council variance is required because the R3 District does not permit a garage as a principal use. Variances to lot width, lot size, fronting, and side yards are included in this request. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Clintonville Neighborhood Plan, which recommends single-family land uses at this location. Staff supports the requested use as it is generally consistent with the plan's guidelines for character, style, and measurements of nearby homes and structures, and therefore we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. My understanding of the actual parcel itself is that, so the plan calls for single-family housing here. However, this is sort of an irregularly shaped lots that would make that potentially difficult. I don't know if you have any...
Regular meeting number forty-five will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dismiss with the reading of the Journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Here are none. The Journal is approved. Will now go to the zoning committee. Council member, our President Pro Tim Dorans chairs that committee. All members serve on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Before we begin tonight, zoning agenda, allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking for council. I'm reusing zoning variances. We only hear a staff presentation for ordinances that have a disapproval from recommending body, or if you have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. Here at night, we have received four public speaker slips, and I believe we have a number of area commissioners with us as well. All speakers on the council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of the area commission and applicants are always able to speak in an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. On the advice of the city attorney's office, I will now swear it in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer in the pains of penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich and Tony Salabrese from the Department of Billion Zoning Services, Dan Bleschman from the Department of Public Service, and Quentin Harris from Development have all been sworn in. Before we begin tonight's zoning business, I want to mention that last week we started reporting on the number of potential housing units that could be approved based upon our agenda. I'm going to continue to do so each week moving forward, as reminded, this council is working to address the housing shortage in our city and our region. On our agenda tonight, we'll be considering six total ordinances that could pave the way for building seventy-nine new housing units. Almost all of them have affordability attached to them. Columbus City Council wants to make clear affordable housing is for everyone and everywhere in the city. As we know, our region is experiencing a housing crisis as economic growth continues, and at the current rate of growth, there's simply not enough housing being constructed in our city. To keep pace with demand, our region needs to double home construction over the next decade to see fourteen to nineteen thousand housing units each year, but oftentimes, we're only seeing half of that on an annual basis. With that in mind, let's move to the legislation before us tonight. First, we have ordinance two-five-one-three dash twenty-twenty-three to rezone nine-one-nine Low Street, being point-two-two-plus acres located in the west side of Low Street, one-hundred-and-sixty-five-plus-feet north of Gibbard Street, and at the southeast corner of Low Street and Gibbard Avenue, from R-four Residential District to M-Manufacturing District, the applicant is Robin Adams, proposes use of a vehicle storage. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. The Development Commission's Recommendation is approval. Milo Grogram and Area Commission's Recommendation is also approval. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two-five-one-six dash twenty-twenty-three to rezone six-zero-one Freiburg Avenue, being point-two-eight-plus acres located in the southwest corner of Freiburg Avenue and south Seventeenth Street, from C-four Commercial District to P-one Private Parking District to R-four Residential District. The applicant is CV Real Properties LLC, care of John Stevenson, proposes use of a single-unit residential development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Development Commission's Recommendation is also approval. And the Columbus South Side Area Commission's Recommendation is approval as well. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Your second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Moving into the council variances portion of our agenda, we have ordinance two-five-one-four dash twenty-twenty-three to granted variance and provisions of section three-three-five-three-point-oh-three, permitted use of the Columbus City Code to property located at thirty-five-hundred Snofford Road to allow a barber shop or beauty and nail salons in the C-two Commercial District and repeal ordinance number zero-six-five-three dash twenty-nineteen, passed March eighteenth twenty-nineteen. Applicant is Abigail Distorano, proposes use of a barber shop, beauty salon, and nail salon. City's Department of Recommendation is disapproval. The far northwest Coalition's Recommendation is approval. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Accept it.
And next move to adopt the fines of staff, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two-five-one-seven dash twenty-twenty-three to granted variance provisions of section three-three-three-two-point-two-one, building lines on the Columbus City Code to property located at six-zero-one Freiburg Avenue to allow reduced building line for a single-unit dwelling in the R-four Residential District. The applicant is CV Real Properties LLC, care of John Stevenson, proposes use of a single-unit residential development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Columbus South Side Area Commission Recommendation is also approval. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. I next move to adopt the fines of staff, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two-five-one-eight dash twenty-twenty-three to granted variance provisions of section three-three-three-two-point-zero-three-five, R-three Residential District, and three-three-three-two-point-two-six, minimum side yard permitted of Columbus City Code for the property located at two-ninety-nine Wahala Road to allow a private garage as a principal use for the reduced side yard in the R-three Residential District. The applicant is Stephen Bullinger, care of Dave Perry Agent, proposes use of a private garage. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Clintonville Area Commission Recommendation is approval. We do have two public speakers signed up to speak against this ordinance, so before we hear from them, we'll have a staff report followed by the applicant. Mr. Dietrich, floor is yours.
President Harden, Chair Dorans, members of council, the site consists of one undeveloped parcel in the R-three Residential District. The requested council variance will allow a private garage as a principal use, which will serve a single-unit dwelling addressed at two-ninety-nine Wahala Road to the west across Goodrun Road. A council variance is required because the R-three District does not permit a garage as a principal use. Variances to lot width, lot size, fronting, and side yards are included in this request. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Clintonville Neighborhood Plan, which recommends single-family land uses at this location. Staff supports the requested use as it is generally consistent with the plan's guidelines for character, style, and measurements of nearby homes and structures, and therefore we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. My understanding of the actual parcel itself is that, so the plan calls for a single-family housing here. However, this is sort of an irregularly shaped lots that would make that potentially difficult. I don't know if you have any comments or context to that.
Correct. I mean, it is a very small lot. It's irregularly shaped, and it is at the corner of two alleys, kind of in the backs of public streets. So to answer your question, it does seem rather small.
Thank you. Do you want to pause and invite the applicant or their agent to speak to the variance in front of us here? Mr. Bullinger, welcome to council. I'm going to swear you in real quick before you give any comments, so beat me to it. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer in pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, councilmembers. Bought this property about a year ago. We lived in it. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old, a six-month-old. We knew when we bought the property that we would be renovating the home. We combined the lots, and this parcel was just on the other side of the alley. We are trying to make this house as green as possible. We're putting in geothermal. We're putting in solar panels, rain catchment systems, doing everything with it. The main purpose of this is, after we found out, we went down the path of geothermal, the drillers came out and they said, "We cannot drill this with the garage that is currently on the parcel itself that is with the house." So then we started looking at the parcel that was just behind, across the alley from us. As was stated earlier, this parcel is rather irregularly shaped. There are garages that front on this alley, all up and down it, and we figured, we were more or less using it as a parking pad anyways, why not go ahead and put our garage there today? We plan to make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible to the neighborhood, doing things like green roofs, putting charred kind of siding on it to make it blend in with the natural trees and everything that we love in the area. The other piece of this is actually taking the remainder of the parcel and putting in additional trees, cleaning it up. As I said, we have a two-and-a-half-year-old, a six-month-old. Love seeing the deer back there bedding down. Obviously, never going to give salt blocks, but want to make a habitat as much as we can for them to thrive in the area. On our parcel itself, it's obviously on the Wahala Ravine. The city's putting a lot of money into that ravine currently and looking at making that a better ravine for everybody, but we recognize the need to plant additional trees, additional plants, make sure that the parcel itself keeps the ravine's quality, and that's what we want to do on the parcel itself. We understand that it does, I guess, intrude, but not really what it is, is this is a parcel that is made for variances. This is how we get projects like this to be able to get approved is because of this. So I'm using this as a tool to allow for a garage to be placed there, to give my kids more green space, allow myself to do geothermal at the house, and create a home that we look forward to staying in for our life. I'm sick and tired of renovating homes, living in them, and just moving out. So looking forward to staying in Clintonville. So, any questions from you?
Yeah, thank you. Any questions from my colleagues at this time? Mr. Bullinger, did you say that currently the parcel is being used as a parking pad right now?
Yeah. Come to find out through this process, that is illegal. Understand that, but it has always been, even before I was there. You know, way back in the day, I was told that there was a playground on it, but for the most part, since I knew about it, it was more or less used as a parking pad.
Okay. Thank you. Again, want to pause. Any questions or comments from councilmembers this time?
Great.
We'll call you back up if we need to. Thank you. As I said, we have two speakers to speak against this ordinance tonight. The first is Mr. or Ms. Dorothy Noyes. Ms. Noyes, welcome to council. And I'll swear you in when you're at the podium. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer in pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours.
I'm here with my husband to speak as affected homeowners and also as people who care about the character of the Wahala neighborhood. The neighborhood above the ravine is dotted with spaces of open woodland. We hope to preserve the wooded area of our own property sitting across the alley from the side yard of two-ninety-nine Wahala. We're also aware of the challenges for cars and trucks on the narrow alleys that provide the only access to our home and the neighboring houses. We have five concerns about the proposed garage. Visibility. The garage is close to the corner between two narrow alleys. It will make it difficult to see oncoming cars from either angle. Maneuverability. The corner is already tight for anything but compact cars. The presence of the garage will make turns more challenging and will increase the likelihood of vehicles overriding our property. Our pawpaws and dodwoods already suffer frequent branch breakages from vehicles backing out of neighborhood driveways or turning in our driveway to get out of the cul-de-sac. Sustainability. We're especially concerned about the large sycamore at the corner of our property across from the proposed garage. Both normal traffic and the large vehicles needed for the construction process will have difficulty avoiding impact with the tree as they negotiate the corner. Having lost a prized old oak to root trauma, we're also worried about the impact of the garage foundation on our sycamore and on the large trees on the parcel and the three-thirty-two Gudrun property. One of these was mentioned in the arborist's report commissioned by Louise Cox as probably one of the largest white oaks in the city of Columbus. The arborist concluded the garage would create significant other seventy-to-eighty-foot oaks. He said that the garage would create a poor long-term prognosis for all three trees. To interfere with a stand of mature trees when there's open yard on which a garage recently stood appears to us a waste of Clintonville's natural heritage. Fourth, liability. We'd like to understand the allocation of financial liability in the event of tree death or damage to the adjacent properties. And finally, usability. We want to note the anomaly of the side parcel, which is divided from the main lot by an alley that provides the principal access to the four houses beyond two-ninety-nine Wahala. If a garage is built on it, this will detract further from the usability and value of three-thirty-two Gudrun. It's in the interest of the neighborhood and of the owners themselves that the three-thirty-two Gudrun property be restored or rebuilt. In short, we believe that zoning rules were created for good reason, and we feel strongly that this is a case in which they should apply. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Noyes. Any questions from colleagues at this time? Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker to come before council on this variance request is Ms. Louise Cox. Ms. Cox, welcome to council. I'll go ahead and swear you in. If you want to raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the...
Asking me?
Over here.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer in pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Ms. Cox, the floor is yours.
Good evening. I want to thank my neighbor, who so eloquently put forth every single thing that I have been saying to Clintonville Zoning Committee and their commission. The zoning committee, I have something written, so I may as well start. I'm Louise Cox, three-thirty-two Gudrun Road, Columbus, Ohio. I am the only homeowner that has two sides of it that are contiguous. Realtors have told me it would diminish the property, my value, because someone would come and see my garage, and less than twenty feet away, another garage. This sliver of land has always been unbuildable since the nineteen forties, when they extended Gudrun Road in order to serve those parcels that were mentioned, and it left a few parcels that were random pieces of land with random shapes. I was also surprised that I never received any direct notification from the zoning board as the contiguous neighbor. I found the sign in the back, cell phone number, and I called Mr. Green at zoning. He kindly forwarded everything I needed, which I really appreciate, and I have exchanged emails with that. Thanks. I had a four-to-two from zoning that they didn't feel in Clintonville that everything had been thoroughly, they weren't thoroughly convinced, and that the hardship may have been done because the garage was taken down. There is more land there. If you look at the enlargement of the house, it has grown much larger than the original house that was there. I reached out to some of my neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Bullinger. I'm concerned about the green space. I really don't like the idea of a garage. And I would really like you to consider postponing your vote tonight on this issue, so we could do more research, and also the fact that if you do choose to pass this, I would like you to only pass one part of it, and I beg you to at least give me one foot and seven inches of land from my backyard, because there is a three-foot minimum, I don't know how my yard is here, three-foot minimum for side yards. And they want that. And also, when the workmen are there, they will be having to come on my property, and also access for the owner. If you pass, he may do this. Solutions for that might be making the garage more uniform to the ones in the area, which are smaller, and moving it. There's five feet on the one side of the plan and one and a half feet on the other side. I think maybe we could get one foot, seven inches to the other side and be reasonable. I've had this property since nineteen ninety-seven. My nephews were in that area. They played. The neighborhood is quaint in nature, and like so many places in this country, many of the quaint historic places are being changed. And the attraction is the trees. And we have that two-hundred-year-old tree that we share with this, and then I have one that's about a hundred and some, and then he has another, Mr. Bullinger has one too. I'd like you to consider what I'm saying and maybe think again whether or not this is the appropriate time to pass this. And I thank you both. Oh, well, both. You, 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 and all of you.
Thank you.
And President Harden. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Do any questions from my colleagues at this time?
Stay there. Actually, I do.
Councilmember, favor.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. I just wanted to make sure I understood the orientation. You were asking if it were passed tonight that there would be an extension made one foot from your property line? Are you advocating for your property to be extended or his property line?
My property is right here, and the garage, the antenna of the garage, front garage, is here, but because of irregularities in the lot, it comes back to where there's only about one foot, five inches left between my property line, and that decreases even more as you go down. Basically, you have a thirty-eight-point-eight-foot lot that decreases to nineteen-point-nine feet over a hundred-and-twenty feet. And I asked the, I was going to ask the math teacher at the high school where I saw, to calculate exactly what we have, you know, for all those horizontal lines on the graph paper, but unfortunately, I didn't do that. I kept doing it in my mind. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. I'd actually just ask staff to respond to the concern there about the placement of the new garage versus our testimony tonight.
I mean, yes, one of the variances you're considering tonight is a reduction from three feet to one-point-five feet.
And there not being any concern from the department?
I think if they move the garage west, it's actually going to reduce the, at the corner of the alleys, that's going to encroach even closer to that. Our zoning code does not have a vision clearance requirement for two alleys coming together, however.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I use all my three minutes? Because I was going to say, there is a hemlock tree that is like right there on the line, and those are rare, and also, not every state has them. Ohio does, and I know Columbus is a city of trees. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. I do want to invite the applicant or their agent back to the podium to respond to any of the testimony from our speakers this evening.
I should have said this in the beginning. I also worked with an arborist. Instead of doing a normal foundation, I plan to do a poured-down or turned-down slab. And so what it is, it's more or less punctures in the earth than it is taking a backhoe and dragging through and creating a, you know, three-foot foundation area, at least thirty-six inches down. So what we'll be doing is taking more or less how you build a deck, like sonotubes, and placing them more or less every four feet. That'll create less harm to the natural environment around us. Again, I would just like to emphasize the amount of trees. I'm working with a natural landscaper that specializes in like restorations of natural landscapes, and so when it comes to those pieces, albeit I understand that I am going to be taking down probably two, maybe three, I wouldn't say young trees, but they definitely aren't the old sycamores and oaks like what we're talking about. They're less mature trees. And again, there are really no trees that are already on the place that we're putting in the garage. Again, this has been used as a parking pad. It has been cleared. There are few trees that I will be taking out, but in working with the area commission and everybody else, I changed my foundation for it to be this turned-down slab to create less harm for the natural environment, and I continue to plan on planting far more trees than I ever take down in the area, not only on this parcel alone, but also the parcel that is where my house is and along the ravine side. And as far as, you know, I understand there's no vision clearance and everything like that, but in good or bad, there is an AEP pool that'll be acting like a Ballard, so it already has an AEP pool at the corner of my property that is making sure people have to make turns outside of, I would say, my parcel. So nobody's using my parcel as a turnaround because of this AEP pool. So I don't know if that answers all the questions that you guys have from the speakers, but I would love to be able to keep moving on this project. Obviously, we're excited to get back in the area, and it really is being done with the best intentions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing as the applicant has, I think, taken specific feedback from the area commission regarding how to best move forward this project, again, the question that comes in for this body for any variance is, is there a hardship? Does council believe that there's good reasons to allow this to move forward? I would certainly encourage the applicant, who has already engaged with the area commission, to certainly engage with their neighbors moving forward, as there are some specific concerns around the construction itself, certainly making sure that any contractors themselves are being respectful of the project to make sure that there's no damage to anyone's property and certainly being as respectful during construction. But I do believe, based upon the hardships that exist for this parcel in particular, for what's being requested before us, and certainly the work of the applicant to mitigate any additional issues regarding the construction of the parcel, that it is appropriate to move forward. So I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the fines of staff, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I move to amend, as amended, clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reeme, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have variance two-five-two-seven dash twenty-twenty-three to granted variance provisions of section three-three-three-two-point-zero-three-three, SR Suburban Residential District, three-three-three-two-point-two-one-B building line, three-three-three-two-point-two-eight-five, perimeter yard for the property located at one-four-five-six dash one-four-seven-two Brenton L. Avenue to allow an apartment complex with reduced development standards in the SR Suburban Residential District. The applicant is Wode Cooper Companies Inc., care of Dave Perry Agent, proposes use of a multi-unit residential development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. North Central Area Commission's Recommendation is disapproval. We have two public speakers signed up to speak against the ordinance, and we have a number of area commissioners who have signed up to speak as well. So before we hear from them, we'll hear a staff report followed by a presentation by the applicant. Mr. Dietrich, the floor is yours.
Yes. The site consists of five parcels in the SR Suburban Residential District, two of which are developed with single-unit dwellings. The requested council variance will allow redevelopment of the site with a seventy-six-unit apartment complex. A council variance is necessary because the proposed use is not allowed in the SR District. Variances to reduce the building line and to utilize a perimeter yard as opposed to side and rear yards in the SR District are included in the request. This proposed development will be subject to a competitive funding process by the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, which requires certain land attributes, including compliant zoning. The site is within the planning boundary of the North Central Plan, which recommends single-family residential land use. The council variance process is supported to assist in this state funding application process because the... process because the proposed multi-unit residential development will provide mixed-income, affordable, and workforce housing consistent with city objectives. A rezoning application requesting an appropriate apartment residential district will be submitted and will be in the formal review process before this project can be submitted for final site compliance review. Therefore, city departments recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Any questions from council members at this time for the department? Seeing none, I will invite the applicant forward to make a presentation, Mr. Jonathan McKay. Mr. McKay, welcome to council. I'll swear you in here at the podium. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer in pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Ms. McKay, the floor is yours.
Thank you, council. So I'm vice president of development with Wode Cooper Companies, Inc. We are vertically integrated, meaning that we develop, construct, and manage all of our communities. We have over 350 communities, over 14,000 units across 17 states. Specific to the city of Columbus, we have completed nine projects. There are three currently under construction, and there are three that are moving through the entitlement process. Before you today, in terms of the 1456 Brenton L.A., I want to go back and give some context and some history of how do we got to this point. Specifically, originally, we had four parcels. This constituted the 1456 Brenton L.A. And we had two three-story walk-ups that consisted of 80 footage total. We quickly realized that that didn't make a lot of sense. We went back to the drawing board. That necessitated that we acquired an additional parcel for a total of six acres. Based on that six acres, what we did is that we borrowed from our Wheatland Crossing II development in the Hilltop, which meant that we put some townhomes along Brenton L.A. and then three-story walk-ups towards the back of the site that was budding the unimproved parkland. In addition to that, we reduced the density down to 76 units. It is a general occupancy development, and this is the first part of a two-part process, meaning this council variance, should it be approved, we would still have to go through the rezoning. And this is done so that we can at least apply for the financing from the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. That deadline is September 28th. So this project is contingent on the financing being secured, so nothing would move forward, nothing would move forward in terms of site control, although we do have an option to buy these two parcels unless we get the financing necessary. In addition to that, in terms of other things that we have done throughout this process based on the three area commission zoning meetings that we've attended, the three area commission meetings we've attended, and we've invited the area commissioners out to the Wheatland Crossing II development, which, as I said earlier, this development is modeled after. Some of the things that we took into account based on the feedback received, I mentioned previously, reducing the density. Another item was changing the product type, so we have that mixture of the townhouses and the three-story walk-ups. In addition to that, we moved the three-story walk-ups further to abut the unimproved parkland. It is out of the stream corridor zone there. Just to be clear, that's why we've moved it as far back as humanly possible, because we want to be mindful of the neighbors with the single-family homes. We've also increased the green space buffer that is abutting the single-family homes. We have taken out a bike-walking path that would connect Dubai to the access for the development. We have done a traffic study, which did not recommend any changes to the development. But we did one because we told the commissioners that we would do one. It was not necessary because the access to the development aligns with what's across the street for the church. In addition to that, we've heard concerns over traffic, which was addressed with the traffic study, safety. Based on what we heard from the commissioners, what we did was we added to the community room space for a CPD office. This is a new thing that we've done on our development, Long Livingston Avenue and right out of Driving Park neighborhood. We have also have for the breezeways for the three-story walk-ups, we've enclosed them. So that way, you have one central access point. And we've minimized on the back part of the property, so you can only exit the back part of those three-story walk-ups, but you have one central entrance, so you have to come in through that front door for those three-story walk-ups. In addition to that, we've made sure that there's adequate site lighting throughout the property, and we've also included enclosed dumpsters as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council members may have.
Any questions from the applicant at this time? Thank you. We'll invite you back up after public testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first public speaker we have signed up to speak on this ordinance tonight is Ms. Marla Martin. Ms. Martin? Welcome to council, Ms. Martin. I'll swear you in real quick. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time and attention this evening. I represent one of the families affected specifically 125 feet of this project. I'm asking you all to please listen to what you're hearing today to understand the impact and that what this project will have on the residents of this community and even more directly, the impact on the adjacent neighborhood. This project has been presented with the prettiest intentions: pathways, playground, onsite management with business hours, potentially police presence and security cameras, et cetera. Everything looks well organized and put together on paper with the pictures and all. Businesses and landowners always see the opportunity of what works best for them. However, no one ever asked or surveyed the residents and how they may feel about a project of this magnitude or consider the impact this will have on the community as a whole. Making promises that cannot be kept. And it is apparent, as this developer holds a one rating with the BBB. Affordable housing would be and is a wonderful concept in this day and time. However, what I heard Councilwoman Faver state last week when the Brittany Hills project was presented, the term affordable housing is weaponized and assumed to be in a lower-income neighborhood or areas. My question is, how can you dispute that? How can you dispute what is true, at least in Columbus proper, yet Franklinton, Hilltop, Linden, Whitehall, Near East Side on Livingston Avenue, Brittany Hills, and now Brenton L.A.? You do not hear of Powell, Delaware, Dublin, Gehanna, Grove City, or if they have developments in those areas. They are maintained at a different level because those suburbs do not deal with the problems of the bigger city. Those city resources care and consider the impact this type of project may pose on their communities. This project brings a different demographic and transient population to an established neighborhood with an older population that truly is not being respected. In the adjacent neighborhood, there are 55 houses. This neighborhood has been blessed, even with turnover, due to either the few residents moving, which has not been the case, or sadly passing away, which has predominantly been the reason for any turnover. There has been good-seasoned people and families that have established themselves in the neighborhood or property has stayed within the family. The residents in this community and the surrounding areas have spent a lifetime maintaining their properties, taking pride in what has been built and giving their best life and living their best life in an area for many 60-plus years with minimal crime or concerns about their livelihood being disrupted with today's nonsense. With a project of this kind and the demographic that will reside in these apartments, you potentially jeopardize the safety of the neighborhood and its residences. It appears that the elderly generation is not given any consideration when it comes to safety and security. This project doesn't give the neighbors a chance to continue feeling secure about their environment and/or that they matter. This project is designed with no separation of property. All those within 125 feet will see no separation of property except by a few bushes. The one difference my family's property has is that our property and the neighbors across the street sit east and west parallel to the development. The other properties in proximity sit north and south to the development with no separation from behind. All lose total privacy with the height build of these buildings. The question has been asked, why not develop a facility for senior living? Just to give you some perspective of this neighborhood, this neighborhood is senior living and the communities around it. The neighbors feel comfortable coming out to work in the yard without looking over their shoulder for someone to walk up on them. Some who continue to work are comfortable leaving and coming home when it is dark without feeling threatened. My sister frequently has to clear webs off of a camera in the middle of the night because a spider wishes to move and shake at that hour. She goes out there with the thought of feeling secure and not considering potential harm that could come of her besides the deer that housed the yard. This is the type of community we have. City resources. Developers come, destroy, and go. Where will they be in five to 10 years as things change? And the developer has discussed having a police presence on the property. My first response is, why do we need a police presence if you all consider this to be housing with professional people as part of the demographic and not potentially a demographic that poses a threat to the safety of the existing community? Police are limited in their resources as it is. How can you promise a police presence? Or why would they even consider stationing an officer on-site when they have problems keeping up with the nonsense in the city as it is? They can't promise that. Question to the council, who do you call when there are complaints that need to be reported or investigated, 311, and ask for code enforcement? Prime example of how the city of Columbus operates, I've called code enforcement on many occasions, year after year, regarding the upkeep on the adjacent property along the fence line. The landowner refuses to keep the grass cut, and there is overgrown brush and trees that extend over into my family's property through the fencing. Response is, there are few code enforcement officers on staff, and they are overloaded with cases. Traffic. The only good thing I can say regarding this project is that they can reconsider turning the adjacent neighborhood into a driveway for the development. However, Brenton L.A. is a two-lane road that has four churches on it with six total in proximity. The Charles School, Recreation Center, trucking business to the south, the Brenton L.A. community, and it is also a cut-through for those coming and going to get north and south. Recently, with Sunbury Road Bridge reconstruction at Woodward and Sunbury Road, Brenton L.A. was the designated detour for north and south traffic and now appears to be a permanent thoroughfare for traffic. With the number of residents potentially occupying these 76 units, this creates an extremely difficult scenario to exit the neighborhoods, the church parking lots, and maintain safety on the street. There is no respect for the speed limit of 25 miles an hour on Brenton L.A. or the signage. Brenton L.A. and Woodward, Brenton L.A. and Holt have both become demolition derby. Several accidents in those two intersections have resulted in injuries, fatalities, and car fixtures left in residence yards, all because the traffic light has been removed at Brenton L.A. and Woodward, and people blow through the stop signs posted at both intersections. In addition, there are no general schools in the walking distance. That places kids in the pathway of ongoing traffic on Brenton L.A. waiting for a school bus, which, as you all know, the law of stopping for school buses is problematic for impatient drivers. This is fact and observed personally. Respect and boundaries. As this development will share property lines with the neighborhood and directly be stationed on the Dubay-Oreole Place fence line, again, only separated by bushes, additionally, the residents adjacent to the property are being set up to have to maintain their property, being their own law enforcement to keep it from being destroyed. People no longer respect each other, least of all elderly, and boundaries are nonexistent. People feel free. People feel that they have the right to do whatever they feel. Last week, during the discussion of the Bethesda development, Councilman Bangston was disturbed by comments that were expressed regarding children and stating that we need to embrace our children and not condemn them. However, the concept of "it takes a village" no longer exists in this day and age. Should you say something to someone's child, you are liable to be placing yourself in harm's way. And with the years of raising their own children, why should the community bear the responsibility of having to now take chances ensuring boundaries are established or just let themselves be taken advantage of? So yes, councilman, things are changing and have changed. Respect is a rare concept. Boundaries do not exist for people with the way things are. The city, kids are in the city. Kids are not embraced at home and pretty much do as they wish. Police are not respected, which is evident on a daily basis, nor do they have the resources. Traffic laws no longer are respected, as it is evident by the speed of the traffic down Brenton L.A. and in the neighborhood streets. Traffic studies performed at night will not provide an accurate assessment of traffic flow during the peak times. You indicated, as elected officials, you all have to make the tough decisions and sacrifices get made. I am requesting, I implore you, I implore you, that you make the tough decision and not the easy decision to just gloss over comments made and approve this project without actually visiting the site. Just a drive-by on Brenton L.A. will not give you a total perspective. But stop by on Dubay. Meet with your constituents in the community, whom you say you care about and really evaluate the site. With that said, I am just requesting that this issue please be table until then. Developers present designs and sell you what they want you to see, but who among you can ensure what they are selling is what is developed? The land is already zoned for single-family homes. Why not assist the professional people you all believe will occupy the space to have an opportunity to own a home instead of cramming 300 people in the square peg to make it fit in a round hole? Every open plot of land does not an apartment complex make. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for Ms. Martin at this time? Councilmember, favor.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Are there any parts of this project that you find you have some value in, or you see how this could be helpful for the community, or is it just an absolute no for you?
It's an absolute no for me, just because of the size of the space. The space is really not, I just really don't see that the space is really sufficient enough to build an apartment complex of this magnitude or at all. I mean, you have surrounding neighbors, you have a house, it's a housing district. It's not an apartment district. Any apartments that have been built or we've had in the past where they've, you know, and you mentioned last week, you said something about Lyndon Gardens. It seems to be like when you have apartment complexes in a nice neighborhood, you're talking about a population that's going to affect a neighborhood that is full of people that have lived their lives in this neighborhood feeling safe. So I just don't see where apartments would benefit. I don't see that this space is beneficial for apartment living, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members at this time? Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
The next speaker to come for council is North Central Area Commissioner, Mr. Hooper. Welcome back to council, sir. Mr. Hooper, you know the drill, but I'll go ahead and swear you in real quick. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer in pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
Yes, I do.
Floor is yours, sir.
Council President Harding and other councilmen. I'm coming here tonight, I know we've heard all the conversations about development. I'm coming here as a victim of circumstance, the American dream, which is homeownership. You taught your kids from birth to go to school, to get their last, go to college, get a good job. Then you can have opportunity to obtain the American dream, which is homeownership for you and your family. I want to ask all the city council members, how many of their homes have these housing projects being built beside their homes or their parents' homes? All in the name of housing crisis. These home owners that surround this housing apartment building never in a million years thought that their homes would be in the middle of apartment buildings. These apartments could bring their property down, and they would be forced to sell their properties. Homeownership, the American dream, gone. Have any of these affordable housing apartments being built in the downtown Columbus area? We got a housing crisis, why not? Are just the outlining areas being singled out to help Columbus housing crisis? We supposed to do this as a Columbus collaborative? Put them everywhere. Let's make Columbus get all the housing. Put them everywhere, let's, let's, let's make Columbus get all the housing needs. Let's be fair, how these areas, how these areas singled out and not diverse all around the city? Please see these neighbors' points of views. Some of their homes have been handed down through them two or three generations. Remember, homeownership, the American dream. They are not against apartment developments or affordable homes, but could you consider affordable housing for seniors on this property? Just as I was fortunate enough to get affordable home, single home by the government subsidized housing. They subsidized where I was just on a minimum wage, where I as a, as a young man could get a house, a full house with a half acre of yard, with the government and the city entities pulling together to make this happen. So when I go to work, I would have the same opportunity that you all, living in gated communities. This is what we are asking for. We build these communities, we pay our taxes, we vote real good for you all. And I'm asking for city council, just don't throw the American dream out for the partners. Let's, let's mix it up, let's, let's do something to keep the American dream going. And I, I'm hoping that somewhere down the line, that we can visualize homeownership. One more time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, we will move to our next public speaker, which is Commissioner B. Tobler. Commissioner, welcome back to council. You know the drill, thank you, you beat me to it. Do you swear or affirm the testament you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth as you shall answer in a pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you all for letting me be here, President Harding and all council members. Nobody could have said it better than our resident. And as you can see again tonight, we feel strongly about what we're saying. This isn't a perhaps thing to us and it's not that we're saying no to affordable housing. You know, my question is, and the thing that's really on my mind, how many of you live in apartments? How many of you don't want to have a single-family resident? And especially as we age, some of you are older than others, some of you are getting there and you want to feel safe where you're at. That's one of the reasons why we own homes. We want to have a little bit of land, we want to have our grandkids over, we want to do a few things that we can't do in apartments. Apartments are fine and I'll be the first to tell you, because I thought about Councilman Favor talked to me afterwards, and I thought about some things that she said. Have this developer come out and seen us on several occasions? Yes, they have. Have they made some adjustments according to what we asked? Yes, they have. Is it enough? Where are our seniors, which I told you before, very passionate about? You know, our resident that spoke, she's got elderly parents as well, that are right there at the base of where they want to put this at. You know, we've talked about building a wall. Build a wall because we don't even want to come, you know, we were offered a chain link fence that they thought would look bad. But when it comes to your own personal protection and what you really feel, I don't want to have gun-toting seniors. That's one of the things that we are all are against in council, right? We're against that, all these guns on the street. I don't want people getting fired upon because somebody is knocking at some door and a senior is scared to death. I'm afraid that may happen with this, I'm afraid of that. You know, I look down the street and in this case, we're right down the streets, there's sidewalks that are already there. And we're right down the street from Brentonell Recreation, but it's not big enough for that many people, nowhere near. But we have to be true to ourselves. We have heard as commissioners, we have heard what our residents are saying. I thank WODA for coming out and presenting as many times as they've done and, and how they have talked with everybody. But one part that he didn't say, and I, and I believe it too, to be true, you can continue to dress things up really nice, but when you say lure, lure it, lure it a little bit. Think about having senior citizens, if you really want homes or rental property for someone in apartments, think about what your residents are asking or where you're building at. And if not, I have to agree with my Commissioner Hooper, who says, where else are these being built? I drive down all around the city and especially down Fifth Avenue here and I've been looking because my son works over at the, my grandson works at the Aquatic Center. And I'm looking at all of these places throughout the city of all of these empty buildings that you said you're building up and we're building them so fast, do you have enough people to go in them? Do they really want to go in these places? Do they? How do we know? We've got a lot of work to do, just like the one resident spoke earlier, the, the transportation and how we get around the city and if you're biking, if you're walking, how are they getting around? You know, that's a sharp corner there at Brittany on 17th. It's almost, you might as well say one block away from that turn. There is, and this is the first tonight that we've even heard about the traffic study because that's one thing that we were asking about. How come that's not shared with us before we get down here? Have some information for the residents and maybe we can buy in a little bit more. Maybe we can, but have it before you come down here and tell all the great stories before us, because it sounds like hogwash to us. It does. Sounds like something that you don't plan on sustaining at a later time. So I'm asking that you disapprove this, that you think about it, or that you at least table it to give us more information. Give us some time, give us a little bit more time. And I keep hearing, oh, they're up against this timeframe. Well, guess what? We're up against a lifetime, up against a lifetime of living comfortable and feeling safe. We don't have that many people that are having that much crime in that area at all. So give us time. I'm sure it's not the only opportunity that they will ever have in life to get a funding pass for that apartment. So I'm asking that you table it, at least consider tabling it instead of just passing it. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions this time for our speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Our last speaker to come before council is Commissioner Tiffany White. Commissioner, welcome back, good to see you again. Y'all are beating me to it. Do you swear or affirm the testament you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth as you shall answer in a pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, Councilwoman President Harding, Council Pro Tem Dorans, and all members of council. Thank you for having me again. Tiffany White, I am actually a resident of the Oriole Heights community and I'm an area commissioner. But a lot of folks don't realize is that area commissions are an advisory body. So when we say no, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a no when it comes to council or even the Board of Zoning. We're educating our, our residents on being on top of engaging with not only the developers but their community to make sure we're, we're making the right decisions. My concerns, because everyone has spoke to everything else, the electric. Unfortunately, in this community, both last summer and the coldest day of last year, these residents were without electricity. And again, these are seniors, so they're losing medication, food, trying to keep warm the coldest day of the year. Brenton has already had a sewer sanitation project that was in place. And after speaking with Councilmember Doran's office, like all those things were decided based on what's there today. So when we add more things, are we going to now go back or do we have to wait until there is bond dollars for you to address that capacity issue? Some of these folks, their backyards flood, so are we, are we adding more harm than good when we're doing these type of things? There have been several traffic studies. There was a traffic study that was just done at Brentonell and Woodward. They, they pulled police reports. And from my understanding, due to the shortage of officers, unless there is a fatality, someone seriously injured or vehicles towed, they're asking individuals to just exchange information and file a report later. So the number of crashes are skewed because if you're getting your car fixed by an insurance company, you're not worrying about filing a report, only if you have damages that are not being paid for. The concern with the traffic is not so much the number of cars, and I think we've talked about this several times before, it's the speed at which they're traveling. All of these accidents have resulted in explosions, serious explosions. We've had two fatalities in a year, one at each end of Brentonell where this project will be nestled. My concern is, again, the impact on our schools. So we just had approval of a 196 project, now we're adding 76. We don't know how many kids are coming with that project, but we know there will be some. We're inundating our schools with additional children and I don't think the left knows what the right is doing when we're talking about those things because we should be talking about, okay, we're going to add 75 more kids. Do you have that capacity in your school building? Because this is the only school pathway that they have if it's a Columbus City school. Yes, there's a, there's transportation, but I've seen people pass Cota buses and there's a shelter, that's where most of the collisions happen. So if you're passing Cota buses, school buses, things like that, again, we need to find some type of traffic calming at Brentonell and Woodward that would slow down the traffic coming towards this development. Crime, I understand why people want to build over here. Our crime stats look great compared to our zone that's speckled with all kinds of other things, but we don't have those type of things and we like to keep it that way. And how do we do that? We have to work with the developers and I get that. I know you guys are under a time constraint, this will probably go through. But what we ask is that there's a fence between the developers' property line and the neighbors, at least six to eight feet, and it needs to be privacy because they're concerned with privacy and safety. The dumpster be moved back to the northern part of the development, not adjacent or abutted to the residential. The playground, we have sidewalks on Brentonell already, the rec center is less than a block away. So does the playground have to be there? We've talked to WODA, they said no, not necessarily. They were moving it for being in the sightline so folks could see the kids. You can see I'm just finding the playground right at Brenton Rec Center. It's way, way out in the open. That would maybe make things a little bit better because people would have to watch their kids. They wouldn't be depending on the neighbors or seniors to do so. And with respect and all those different things that happen with our young people, it would be better for the parents to take their kids down there than the neighbors to try to address them while they're climbing their fences and doing other things. So although my community says no, we've had these discussions over and over, we've asked for consideration several times. I would just like those things to be included and we continue to have that conversation because when you say neighborhoods and you, you talk about them consistently, 120 feet does not consume a neighborhood. There are over 400 homes over there that are considered Oriole Heights. It's not fair that these folks standing back here aren't able to speak, to tell you about their experiences, those things that happen in their communities, and that's just how they feel overall. So it's up to us, these few folks, to be able to give you this in a short little snapshot. But I thank you for your time. I, I want to thank my community because they've come out way too many times and, than need it, but I think it is necessary that we stay engaged and that we stay on top of what is happening in our communities and holding folks accountable. The last thing that I wanted to say was, Whirling Place, which is near, I guess it's in Gehanna, but it might be Columbus Gehanna Schools, several of the neighbors behind me have gone to and visited that property. They've talked to property managers, they've talked to residents, and the concern is maintenance. The concern is the responsiveness of property managers. So the other thing that I'd ask, and I'll probably stop asking until we get in front of them again, is that we have an after-hours phone number, not only for the property manager, whoever the regional district manager is, and if there are maintenance concerns, that we as commissioners or neighbors back here can reach out to WODA and say, hey, 1B needs this and no one's responding, what's going on? Because they all, the folks that live in apartments don't necessarily know their rights either. So it's up to us to support them, but it's also for us to make sure that everyone is held accountable. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions or comments from my colleagues for Commissioner White?
Nope.
Seeing none?
Okay.
Thank you. I do want to at this time invite the applicant back up to respond to any of the public comment
Thank you again. So a couple of things that I want to address here based on what was said. We are Columbus-based, we take a great pride in our developments, we make a 30-year commitment here to all of our properties. We don't just sell properties and leave, we're going to be here for the long haul. So any maintenance-type concerns or things that would rise, you know, I'll be the first to tell you, we're not perfect, but they will be resolved in a timely fashion. In addition to some of the comments about seniors, we have 15 one-bedrooms and 52 two-bedrooms. So we have ample opportunity for seniors to live at the property. Just because of general occupancy doesn't mean that seniors would be restricted from living there. They can, and we would expect some to also live there. In regard to some of the buffer space, we have almost three acres that is green space. There's an ample buffer between the single-family homes. In regards to the CPD office, we happen to think that's a good amenity and something valuable, but if the community feels otherwise, you know, that's something, because this is a two-step process, assuming that this would go through, we are happy to work with the community and change that to something else in terms of a programming space or something else. Regarding the traffic study, that was done during peak hours, that was provided to Tiffany White, I double-checked my emails back on July 10th, so I apologize if certain commissioners did not get that study. In regards to, you know, why this site in particular, based on the aerial, if you look at, on Holt Avenue, 2219 Holt Avenue, there is a multifamily property abutting the parkland here, and that was sort of the vision that we utilized for why we thought it was important to have this project here as well. There was a height restriction of 35 feet that was passed, we are under that 35-foot height limit. So that was the basis for why we decided to target this area in particular, and also because we think this is a high-quality neighborhood, it makes a lot of sense. In regards to homeownership, and we have heard the North Central Area Commissioner loud and clear on that, and one of the things that we are working on is a single-family homeownership development and potential for a future OFA funding round. So we recognize the importance of homeownership and that's something we're going to be working diligently on moving forward. So just because this project doesn't have any homeownership component, doesn't mean that we're ignoring that. It would be on infill lots, I don't want to go into too much detail, but we do have 40 lots under control as of right now. In regard to why other places in terms of building downtown, in terms of affordable housing, I'm sure people saw many of the news articles, we are in contract on the YMCA in terms of converting that into high-quality affordable housing of approximately 117 units. So we target and look at all kinds of types of development, from adaptive reuses of vacant structures to an urban downtown settings to more suburban settings such as this one. Regarding the electric, this development is going to be built to lead Silver Certification and Columbus aware standards. It's not going to be an energy hog by any state, so we would not anticipate any drain in terms of the electricity. In regards to the dumpster being moved back, I think that makes a ton of sense and I think the best place is to put it in between the three-story buildings, so we're happy to make that adjustment. In terms of the playground, just in terms of the thought process with why we put it where we did, we're trying to limit the automobiles from coming close to the playground if they put it further away at the end there by Dubai, but we can move that as well and we're happy to adjust that in terms of when we move forward and have further dialogue with the communities. This is by no means a finished product and there's going to be further engagement should this pass tonight. And I hear you in terms of the after-hours maintenance, so I don't see why we can't work out either a good neighbors agreement or something of that nature so that there is a specific contact that people can go to in terms of maintenance after hours. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
At this time, Councilmember Favor, I think you have a question for the applicant.
Thank you for those responses. Commissioner White also...
Commissioner White also advocated for a fence between the development and neighbors as well as the orientation of the dumpster to be moved as well?
Yes. So the dumpster, right now, is close to the end of Dubai there. What makes more sense, and I agree with her on this, is between the three-story walk-up buildings, there is a space where we could move the three-story walk-up a little bit closer to make room for the dumpster and put that dumpster in between those. So that way it'd be at the very back rear part of the property. We're happy to make that change. In addition to that, what was your other question?
The fence.
The fence. So we put a green space buffer, because we felt that it was redundant to have the fence and the green space buffer with the evergreens. But if the community feels strongly about a fence, we could remove the green space buffer and put the fence in instead. In my mind, the evergreens, they're going to act as a fence. That's why we're not showing it today. But if that is the preference of the community, we can remove the evergreens and we can put the fence up.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from Councilmembers? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. McKay, the traffic study?
Yes.
Was that shared with the community?
Yeah, it was sent on July 10th to Commissioner White, and it was done during peak hours.
It was done during the peak hours?
Yes.
Could you make that available to this council? I'd like to take a look at it myself.
Yes, of course.
With regard to the issues. And for discussion purposes specifically. The traffic that I know about on Brent-Nell, there's issues. And some way in which to address the concerns from a traffic signal to some type of comming devices certainly need to be looked at. And I don't know if the traffic study did that or not.
So the traffic study did not recommend any changes to the site plan. However, based on your concern, the things that we have heard from the community, what I would envision is that we will probably have a turning lane into the development to so that people slow down. We've also included a clear-vision triangle for people exiting development, so they have clear point of vision when they're exiting to avoid any potential crashes. So we have made accommodations, and we look forward, should this approval go through, of looking at the feasibility of doing that turning lane, because I think that would make a lot of sense there.
Well, I have to disagree with you about them turn slowing down, because they don't slow down when they make the turns in the area. And that needs to be addressed appropriately, if you're going to increase the volume and density within the community. So if you'll provide that to me, I will take a personally, take a look at the traffic study and make a determination, as vested back to my colleagues, as to whether or not they are not addressing the concerns that the community has expressed.
Be happy to share that with you.
Thank you.
Other councilmembers? Councilmember Faver?
I'm sorry, could you point out once again the AMI levels that you are serving in the property?
Sure. So overall, with the 76 units, we have 16 units at 30% AMI, 16 units at 50% AMI, 12 units at 60% AMI, and 32 units at 80% AMI.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McKay, do you have that information in front of you?
I don't have the breakdown.
Councilmember Faver?
80% of the area meeting income for an individual in Columbus is $52,000. That's a construction worker. 80% for a family of four is $74,000. That's equivalent to a registered nurse. 60% for an individual is $40,000. That's a customer service rep in central Ohio. 60% for a family of four is $56,000. That's equivalent for an electrician salary. 40% or 30% of the area meeting income is around $26,000, hotel front desk clerk. And for a family of four, it's $37,000. That'd be like a vet technician in central Ohio.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions or comments from councilmembers for the applicant at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I call for a vote on this project, I do want to pause and see if councilmembers have any comments they'd like to make as it relates to the variance request in front of the body.
Well, I'll go.
I do. Councilmember Faver?
Thank you. And I want to take a moment, once again, to thank this community for coming back to City Hall back-to-back. You have been heard, and my vote, again, tonight is going to be yes. And I'm going to, once again, reiterate why my vote is a yes. Commissioner White said that it's important for you all to stay engaged, and I believe it's important for us to stay engaged as well. And my office has already reached out, because we are committed to seeing both of these projects, tonight's project and last week's project, all the way through the finish line, with the acknowledgement that there are so many steps ahead of us, that a lot of the ideas, constructive criticisms that have been elevated, they're very well taken, and that we can work collectively to address those issues, just like some of the issues that Commissioner White addressed here tonight. But one of our other commissioners may pose the question of whether or not any of us live near apartments or if apartments are being built. And this community is no longer my home, but I live on the Near East Side, where there are apartments being built left and right. And so I say that in the most respectful way, that the way in which Columbus is growing, there's not going to be any community that is not going to feel the impact of this growth. It's going to look different in different areas. Someone made a point to acknowledge that we're not seeing affordable development in Pickerton and Reynoldsburg, and you're not wrong. And that is why Columbus is leading that charge around what does having a housing strategy that is really supported by the region, because Columbus can't absorb all of this growth. But we also can't wait around for others to also participate in recognizing this very fact. And so it's incredibly important, I believe, for us to act timely. The coming of Intel is not going to slow down. Neither is any of the other planned growth that was happening even outside of Intel. And so that does mean that we have to continue to make some of those challenging decisions like this one, once again. I also mentioned last week, outside of Chambers, as we were talking about what single-family development looks like now. And I appreciate WODA talking about its plans to do single-family development alongside this project as well, which is incredibly exciting. But the reality is that single-family new construction, at minimum, is like $2.65 in the city of Columbus, with 7% to 7.5% in interest rate. These are numbers that do not look like when I first purchased my home, nor do they probably look like when you all purchased your home as well. And so people still need a place to live. And so we have been talking about what different types of housing units look like. And so whether it's single-family, or it's modular, or it is tiny homes or accessory dwelling units, we're going to be evaluating and approving different types of housing accommodations outside the traditional single-family and apartment-style living. And so there was also another question around, is there a need? Or is there any, do we have enough people to fill these units? Absolutely, yes. Every single day, my office is inundated with people who are trying to find someplace to live in Columbus, Ohio. We do not have enough housing units to accommodate the growth right now. And unfortunately, what we're finding is that more and more people are being evicted. And at the top of those numbers are black and brown individuals. We find more and more people are finding themselves in homeless situations, and black and brown people are also leading those numbers. And so when I am grappling with those decisions or those realities, that is part of the decision that I'm making here today and saying yes for this project now, but also yes to supporting this community and leaning in in any way that I can to make sure that you know that you're heard, but then also using my platform to work with the developers to get the type of product that you all want at the end of the day. So hopefully that helps, gives a little bit of background to my vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other members? Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I echo Councilmember Faver's appreciation to the community. I apologize that I was not able to be here last week when the community came out again to speak on their concerns about development in the neighborhood. I'll just address the first part. The first young lady who spoke to us, then I appreciate everything that you said. You asked us to do the hard thing and take the hard vote, not to vote for this and to vote with the community. As I look out into this audience of people that I know, people that I have grown up with, people that I have worked with in my 15 years of being in this department, people who I have known well before that, and knowing that I'm going to have to take a vote that is against what they want right now. And to say that that is a hard vote or an easy vote is the exact opposite. These are not easy votes. And it's not that they're not easy votes, because they pull on my conscience about what I know is right to do. That part is easy. I know that we need more housing in our community. And I know that, as I think about, when we talk about what is good for our seniors and what is good for our residents, I also have to think about what is good for your children and your grandchildren. If we do not build more housing in this community, no one that grew up like I grew up, no one, that very few of us, will be able to afford to live within the city limits. Councilmember Doran spoke on this earlier. We are bringing in, creating 16,000 to 18,000 jobs a year in our community. And we're building 6,000, at the most, 7,000 units a year, which means that we are successing ourselves into failure. People are coming regardless of what we want to do or not. We can put our heads in the sand if we would like to. We can say that those apartments, of course, we all want affordable housing, but not over here. But that is not the option we have anymore. That is not the option we have anymore. They are, we have to build housing everywhere, everywhere. We have to build it in my neighborhood where I live. Now, we have to build it in the neighborhood that I grew up, on Fairwood and Galt Street. We have to build it in Southfield, where I spent all of my formative years. And I had to take votes for housing in each one of those neighborhoods, because I've grown up, I've been here. This is my city, and this is where we will raise our children. And I've had to take these hard votes, not easy votes, hard votes, everywhere, right next to my mom's house. People are still coming down here. Folks look just like me in my neighborhood are still coming down here talking about the vote that I took for the Southfield development. It was the right vote, even though folks from my family came out and said that we shouldn't do that. Because, at the end of the day, it will be people that look like me and my family that will be moving into those homes. And we talk about homeownership. The Councilmember Faver just said at this point, oh, yeah, it would be great that if we could bring, we could house the literally 700,000 to a million people that we have coming to Columbus in single-family homes. But the reality is, with incomes and with hourly rates, folks can't afford a $260,000 home. That's what it is right now. That is what, that's the going rate for a new home to be built in the city of Columbus. Many folks in my family couldn't afford a $260,000, $70,000 home. And so we have to look at, we have to shift the way that we think about density and these type of units. $80,000 is a part of 80% AMI? That's a good job. These are folks, these are our folks. And so taking this assumption that just because they live in an apartment, that it automatically means that we need to build a wall? Automatically? I mean, the truth is, in a city that is growing like ours, an apartment is the new starter home. It is the first step. That is what allows you to keep a roof over your head while you work hard, and so that you can do like everybody else in the neighborhood in Brent-Nell and have homeownership. Of course, folks want that, but they got to start somewhere. They have to start somewhere. And so I will be voting yes. And it is not an easy vote. It is, I will sleep well, because I know I have to do this. And I know that more and more, it comes with political consequences. And I will still sleep well with that. But why it is hard is because people that I love, people that come from communities, and people that have the exact same values that I have, will think ill of me and folks who take these type of votes, because they can't yet understand and can't yet see what is coming to our community and the necessity for us to build more and build everywhere. And so I will be voting yes, and it is a hard vote tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to pause and see if any of the members have comments they'd like to make before I call for the vote. Thank you. One thing I do want to note, and I certainly want to thank Chair White, you know, I think one of the things that, as these projects have moved forward, we as a city need to do a better job at unsiloing these things off. Because when we talk about a lot of the issues that have been brought up, they're not zoning questions. They're not questions of land use policy, which is ultimately what is before this council here tonight. That doesn't make them not a legitimate question or concern for folks in the community. So what I've committed to Chair White is that, as we look at our capital budget and other ways that we can certainly partner, particularly in areas of the city that we are seeing significant growth that has not had it before. And that is something that is on council, that is something that's on the administration, that's something on the departments, to unsilo those things off. So again, when we talk about traffic, when we talk about connectivity, when we talk about transportation, those are not separate discussions. Even though the question before us is a land use question here tonight, and those, you know, the question of what is the neighboring schools? Or what is this kind of thing that's associated? That's ultimately not before us, as we cast this vote here tonight. But those are legitimate questions for the community to have answered. And I believe that this body is interested in doing our job to try and unsilo those things off, to do a better job with it. The other thing I just want to mention before I call for a vote is that, when I took over this committee, and I mentioned this last week, I wanted to be crystal clear with the priorities of this body. We articulated nine different priorities that this body would use to evaluate projects. This checks seven of those nine boxes. So, you know, I want to thank the area commission for their work. Certainly, this project is different than what it was when it started, and there's a reason for that. There was feedback that was taken from community members, that the applicant changed. Hopefully, this is a better project for it. And again, this project will come back to this body again, if it moves forward, for a rezoning. So when we talk about things like fences or other things, there is the ability for folks to continue to engage. Again, this developer will be required to hold the property for at minimum of 15 years, if in fact, they are awarded funding from the state of Ohio. So they will be your neighbor for 15 years, which is required for us to have a, hold them to account for commitments that are made, because they're not going anywhere. So with that, I do want to, at this time, pause and see if there's any other questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Ben Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorans favor, Remy President Harden.
Accepted.
Finally, I move to adopt the findings of staff, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorans favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopted.
I next move to amend this submitted to clerk.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorans favor, Remy President Harden.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorans favor, Remy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all we have in the zoning committee tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further business coming for council, meeting is adjourned. I motion for the meeting to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla Brown, Dorans favor, Remy President Harden.
Adjourned.